Great to see so many people here tonight. So I'll convene the meeting of the Westboro Select Board. For all those that are able, we will welcome you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to say thank you to Westboro TV for airing and recording this meeting tonight. Again, great to see so many faces here tonight for our celebration of the Police and Fire Department's promotions. With that said, I'll just ask Chief Monarty to come up and introduce his candidates.
Good evening, Chief Monarty. Thank you for having us here today. This really is a culmination of the promotion of our corporals position, which I really want to thank each and all of you for your support in allowing us to create that position, the Town Manager and her staff and the board. To me, it really is instrumental in what we do and the supervision of our staff, so I think it's really a great day. There's actually three people being promoted. One of them couldn't be here. Beau Bukinek is away on vacation, so he was going to be the third, but this really is the culmination of the creation of the corporals position. So Lieutenant Luce did a short bio on the two candidates that are going to be promoted, so I'll have him present that for you, and we'll have them sworn in. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you.
Evening.
Welcome.
So first, Corporal Pete Girardi. Pete Girardi has been a police officer for approximately eight years. After graduating from the Worcester Police Academy, he began his career at Worcester. He then transferred to West Boylston before coming to Worcester, or Westboro, in 2020. Pete is a member of the Community Engagement Team and is also an FTO. He has his master's degree in criminal justice and a certificate in executive leadership from Anna Maria. He lives in Grafton with his wife Brianna and has two children, Gabriella, who's three and a half, and Sophia, who's 11 months. He will be pinned by his wife Brianna. Corporal Joseph Sabati. Joe has been a police officer for about 21 years. He started his career at the Mass Maritime Academy, then went to La Salle Mount Idaho College Police Department before coming to Westboro in 2017. He's a member of the Community Engagement Team, an Elder Affairs Liaison, FTO, Honor Guard Recruitment Team, and Special Olympics Liaison. Joe has his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Endicott College. He lives in Framingham with his wife Christina and their son Nicholas, who is five years old. He will be pinned by his wife Christina.
Terrific. Welcome. Thank you very much.
I state your name.
I, Joseph Girardi.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a police corporal.
As a police corporal.
For the town of Westboro.
For the town of Westboro.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Indegriably.
Indegriably.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And the bylaws of this town.
And the bylaws of this town.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We'll come around and get some pictures here. Do you want to do a couple photos? (Inaudible) Welcome, Pat.
Thanks for having me. Is this on?
Give it one second. We're going to close the door over here.
All good?
All good.
All good, chief.
All right. Hi, good evening. Patrick Purcell, serving as your fire chief here in the town of Westboro. And first, before we start, I just wanted to thank the Select Board for giving us, the Fire Department, the forum tonight to celebrate one of our proudest occupational opportunities here, and that's promotion to fire officer within the Westboro Fire Department. It's very important, not only to the individuals being promoted, but to their families and also to the organization to have this opportunity. If we have learned one thing from all of the events and incidents that are happening today in our world, it is that integrity is more important than ever. Excuse me. A leader cannot produce or succeed if he or she is without integrity or a strong belief in core values. Our integrity defines our character, and this same character is how the members of your fire department behave when nobody else is looking. I feel extremely privileged, and I never for one second have taken for granted, that I have been given the opportunity to lead a great organization. Within the organization, there are many hardworking women and men that come to work every day, train hard, and they do their very best to ensure the safety of others. Over time, the members of our department have worked extremely hard to move our organization forward, all while maintaining fire host traditions, being respectful of our culture, and demonstrating our abilities as we provide emergency services to tens of thousands of people here annually. One of the key ways that we have moved our organization forward was to seek from you, the Westboro Select Board, to create leadership opportunities to assure that we meet standards, follow policies, and deliver a high quality of service to the residents and the patrons of our great community. These appointments will allow us to operate with greater continuity within the department, enable our operations division to operate with more efficiency. And with the support of the Town Manager, the Assistant Town Manager, and much of our administration, we were able to expand the salary and administration plan, gain support from local 3070, and expand our very own organizational structure. This initiative to redefine the organizational structure puts our department in a better position to help maintain and foster the core values that I just spoke of. In addition, these values include loyalty, compassion, courage, leadership, and accountability. These values are not necessarily fulfilled by positions, though, if they're accomplished by promoting the right people, your future leaders. This is why I'm proud to support the promotion of the following people. Captain Roger Boucher, promotion from lieutenant to captain. Roger joined the Westboro Fire Department of May of 2013, was promoted to lieutenant in December of 2019, and we are late on this, and I apologize for that. At the end of 2023, was promoted to captain. He currently serves as a shift commander of Group One. He's a certified fire officer, fire officer one and two. He serves as a paramedic, and he's assigned to the District 14 Dive Team and Technical Rescue Team. He's also our training captain. Next is Lieutenant Barry Sullivan, being promoted from firefighter to lieutenant. Barry joined our department in 2016 and is promoted also at the end of 2023 to lieutenant. He's a certified fire officer one and two. He has a bachelor's degree in fire science from Anna Maria College. He's a paramedic, and the same as Captain Boucher, he's assigned to the District 14 Dive Team and Technical Rescue Team. Lieutenant Dale Goodspeed, being promoted from firefighter to lieutenant. Dale joined the Westboro Fire Department in May of 2012 and is now being promoted tonight. He's a paramedic. He serves as our department's Emergency Medical Services Coordinator, which takes up a lot of his time. He's a fire officer one and two, and he's also a paramedic, and he's assigned to the department's Fire Investigation Unit. Lieutenant Nicholas Ostrander, being promoted from firefighter to lieutenant. Nick joined the Fire Department in November of 2014 as a career member and is being promoted tonight to lieutenant. He is a paramedic, certified fire officer one and two, and he has a bachelor's degree in business administration from the University of New England at Bedford, Maine. Lieutenant Greg Doucette, being promoted from firefighter to lieutenant. He joined the Fire Department in May of 2012, being promoted to lieutenant tonight. He has an associate's degree in paramedic science and an associate's degree in fire science from Quincy Community College. He is a paramedic and certified fire officer one. And lastly, Lieutenant David Dutton, being promoted from lieutenant, excuse me, from firefighter to lieutenant. Lieutenant Dutton joined the department in November of 2018, is being promoted to lieutenant tonight. He's a certified fire officer one, a certified diesel mechanic, and he is responsible for our entire fleet management program at the department. He's also an EMT. So lastly, as I invite fire officers' families up to be with them as they're sworn in, I just wanted to give the families a message. I know that it's hard sometimes when people who choose the career as firefighter are away at weird times like nights, weekends, and holidays, when it's bad weather, or maybe when it's for extended periods of time. But just know that your husbands or fathers always do such a tremendous job that the same time that they are away provides reassurance to the rest of us that we will always remain safe and always return home to our own families. We're very fortunate to have them all. At this time, I'd like to call up the candidates as well as their families.
All right, so for those of you getting sworn in, I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lieutenant Purcell.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a fire, state your rank.
As a fire, Lieutenant.
For the town of Westboro.
For the town of Westboro.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
And agreeably.
And agreeably.
To the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
The rules and regulations of the Constitution.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And the bylaws of this town.
And the bylaws of this town.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Take a bunch of pictures, chief. Take a bunch of pictures. Anybody of you guys want to hang for a minute? We've got plenty of time.
I just have one more thing. So I feel it's a fitting time to make a special announcement regarding Lieutenant Dave Dutton, Lieutenant Chris DuBois, who couldn't make it here tonight, or Chris Weinworm, that couldn't make it here tonight, firefighter Sean Dougherty, firefighter Patrick Sheridan. So on June 2nd of this year, these firefighters were on duty on Group Four, and they responded to the scene of a building fire at 22 South Street at 2:00 in the morning. Upon arrival, they had heavy smoke and fire issuing from the building. They could hear occupants yelling for help, and they observed two adults trapped on the roof of the burning structure. Lieutenant Dutton observed the silhouette of the trapped civilians through the smoke, made a tactical decision to permit a rescue of both an adult male and female, as well as control the fire with limited water supply. In the course of doing this, I think we know the structure of 22 South Street, the fire could have been a lot more significant in property loss. So in addition to saving lives, because of their tactical decision-making, they reduced property damage significantly. Because of their actions that night, these three firefighters, as well as the two missing firefighters, they're going to be honored by Governor Haley on November 18th, 2024, at Mechanics Hall in Worcester at the 35th Annual Firefighter of the Year Awards, and we encourage you all to attend. So I'd just like to offer them congratulation on that, and they didn't know about that until right now. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. Have a great night.
Fantastic, chief. Thank you for sharing that with us. You are all welcome to stay, and we're going to continue on with the meeting now.
You don't have to either.
You don't have to either. (Laughter)
Yeah.
All right, so continuing on with the agenda, I'll open it up for open forum if there's anyone here for open forum. Welcome, please come on up. Please introduce yourself, and please also just speak as close to the microphone as you can. We've had troubles in the past, so...
Is that good, like that?
That should be pretty good.
Okay. Hi, I'm Joanne Aramini, Seven Meadow Road. I and some others have come to express our concerns about the BWALT, sorry, is that better, about the BWALT project in its entirety and Section Two specifically, as well as Article 14 in the upcoming town meeting, because it relates to getting easements for Section Two of the BWALT. So what I'd like to do is to kind of go back a little bit and explain how we got here today. Recently, the planning board had two presentations back in May and September on Section Two of BWALT. BWALT is six sections. This was just for Section Two, and it was advertised as an opportunity for the abutters to give input into this Section Two piece. Well, that didn't happen. The plan and the same plan was presented at both meetings.
Sorry, hold on one second. I just want to make sure he doesn't...
He can close.
He can't close it? Okay. Okay.
So the plan and the same plan were presented at the same, at both of the meetings. So all of the abutters' concerns and comments were not considered at all in it. So everything that was presented, everything that was presented was a surprise to us, to be honest with you. So we started doing some research. We looked at copious meeting minutes, we looked at documents, we talked to people, we looked at articles, we listened to meetings, and what we learned as taxpayers was very concerning to us. So we wanted to present this. What we learned is that back in 2012, the Select Board at the time established what they called a bike committee, and it was made up of all volunteers. And at the very first meeting, September of 2012, this plan was presented. We don't know who did the plan, what that person's credentials were, we don't know who wanted this plan, who directed this. a direct line from when they come out of the conservation, behind the Meadow Plaza, and behind those commercial buildings, which is also a direct hookup to the crosswalk across Route 135? So really, in addition to the things that were said about how the objectivity of this feasibility study may or may not have been conducted, as somebody who is directly affected by this, I would like to know how the path that it is proposed is more feasible than a clear, straight shot. That's all I would like to add. And I just didn't know if we're ever going to get an answer on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, Michelle Coburn, Indian Pond Road as well. And I want to echo Eric's sentiments, as well as Joanne, and I'm sure Kevin's going to be speaking as well, as to the safety of doing the BWALT through, up through Meadow Road, because Meadow Road, as we know, is narrower than some of the roads in town, and to, it's difficult enough to get two cars through when they're both paralleling each other, and to add bikes or people, pedestrians or wheelchairs, if that be, is going to be extremely dangerous. So I'm concerned about that, as well as, I'm wondering why the feasibility study didn't, you know, take our suggestions and go back through the plaza as opposed to going up Meadow Road, and so I'm requesting another feasibility study as well. So thanks, you guys.
Thank you for coming in, talking to us.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Sorry, good evening. My name's Kevin Barry, 8 Indian Pond Road, and I've been a resident here for over 25 years. I think Joanne kind of stole some of my thunder, but I think to, not to be repetitive, we have brought concerns, obviously, about Article 14, and in particular, about the concept and the core and the crux of this feasibility study, and the plan as it is in place now. So in essence, what we're trying to get across is that this town-funded public works project, or capital improvement project, has not followed the same due process or procedure as other projects, such as the Community Development Center, such as the Gulf Building Renovation Project, whereas this is $25 to $35 million that has never gone in front of the town for public disclosure. And I would challenge anybody, your neighbors, anybody, to go up and ask them, do they know about this BWALT program? Does anybody know the whole scope of this concept? And/or do they know it costs $25 to $35 million? Just a quick, I know we've talked about the feasibility study, what our core, what the core, I think, as far as the issue that we have, the concerns among the environmental and the traffic concerns, are the fact that this study was not done objectively, not done without bias, and it was done, in fact, where the owner of the company, Waterman Design Associates, was the main planner of the originated plans back in 2012. So for six to seven years, when they, before they were awarded this project, they were fully engulfed and invested in the project design, redesign where it needed to be, implementation, construction, and then the full pursuit of easements. So all this was done by this person, then they were awarded the feasibility study, and then brought on board, as consultants, the same people that originated this. So that, for the most part, speaks total lack or conflict of interest, in a nutshell. I also just, as far as public discourse and public information and full disclosure, is I just want to remind, when this feasibility study was brought to the Board on October of 2019, you know, several comments were made, which have not been kind of followed through. You know, someone mentioned that this was a thoroughly public process, and there were multiple opportunities to critique, change, or tweak. That was not the case. There were no residents involved with this. It was in a vacuum. One Select member said, a Select Board member said, "We as a town will decide," then soon comments were made as cha-ching, and "What's the budget?" Meaning, obviously, it should go to town, because of the scope of the project being upwards of $35 million, the town should know about it. And then someone went further, as far as capital improvement projects, saying, "It should be the expectations of public input prioritization based on overall town projects. With that, it should follow due process, as with all capital improvement projects." And then finally, "It should be a public process for allowing opportunity for public input," which there was never, never any public input, as such, there has been with other projects within town. So in essence, just to kind of close quickly, is we feel this is more of a want versus a need, as far as there's a small group that are pushing this through and have pushed this through, where we feel strongly that there's more of a need, and it's been addressed with different committees, that there's more of a need for safer routes to school, for complete streets, and funds should be devoted to that, as opposed to, that's more of a necessity and a need, as you are fully aware, as far as different boards and things that have come in front of you, that it should be reevaluated. And finally, it should be reevaluated because of the time period. This was done in 2019. It's now 2024. In 2019, when that study was done, it was based on statistics and data from 2013, as far as traffic and viability. You know, it was based on a commuter rail, where basically, West Park Drive was kind of a crux of the conversations. That has 20 to 30% occupancy rate easily, if not less. You've got two buildings that are empty there, so for that to be a commuter rail and commuting where there's now remote work from home, it's a different story. So in essence, we're just asking for a little bit of a pause to reconsider this, and kind of look at our concerns a little more involved, please. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Anyone else here for open forum?
Can I just say?
Sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me. I know the Board doesn't typically respond, but I just think, and there's a lot there, which I don't want to reduce to one comment, but I just think it's really important for the public to know that no funds were spent that did not go to town meeting. So there were appropriations at town meeting, and those appropriations were spent. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that in terms of appropriating funds, I know that's not all of what was just said, but I think it's really important that the funds were appropriated by town meeting and spent appropriately in that way.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, move on to our Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So at the last board meeting, Chief Bursell came with the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission to, or in late August, so not at the last meeting, to talk about the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which we've been working on. As part of that process, there's a public comment period for feedback on the plan. So they intended to do a two-week public comment period. The Board had requested it be extended for three weeks, which was done, and that period has expired. They're now taking in that feedback and updating the plan, amending the plan based on that. And so this is just an opportunity, if the Board has any additional comments you'd like us to forward to Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Alternatively, you may have also provided comment through the typical public feedback forum. CMRPC will make those edits, and then submit the plan to FEMA and MEMA for their review, and then they estimate that that will take approximately three to four months. So once that's completed, they would come back to the Board for final adoption of the plan. So if you have any comments, we'll record those, similar to maybe how we do site plan, and then we can forward them along to CMRPC.
So open up, see if anyone has any comments.
I've read the plan twice. I'm hard-pressed to identify anything that I can see needing changes, that are thought, you know, the plans, considerations that I would never have thought about. I'm impressed with its thoroughness.
Yeah, yeah, I'd just like to thank the roughly 20 members of our town, you know, departments including fire, police, public works, sustainability, I mean, everybody, public health, everybody involved in this plan. It was very thorough. Reminder to folks that it is not in a, an emergency response plan, it is how we mitigate hazards before they occur, and yeah, it looked extraordinarily thorough. Thank you very much.
Yeah, nothing.
All right.
No comments.
Great.
So my understanding is, we don't approve it yet, it goes to MEMA, then to FEMA, then back to us.
Right. We want to make sure that any changes that need to be made according to those agencies are made prior to your approval of the final document.
And it'll be another three or four months, I think, before it comes back to us.
Correct.
All right, moving on to the Harvey's contract.
So you have in your packet a final version of the Harvey's contract. There, it's, you've seen versions of it previously. It has not changed much since the last meeting. One thing that we did include in this contract, based on the discussion at the last meeting, is our, is the recycling cost of $120 a ton for glass and plastic only. And so, so everything is incorporated, it becomes effective, the effective date will be the date that we sign, and that will go through until June 30th of 2025, and there's an option for extensions, mutual option for two one-year extensions. One of the things that we talked about at the last meeting also was some credits owed, so that was sort of a separate part of the conversation, but we did, we have worked through some of that with Harvey's, and today, I think we came to agreement on what those numbers are. So that's a credit due to the town of $80,649, and then additionally, so that would be a function as a credit, so we would spend down that credit in fiscal '25. And then we would also be provided a reimbursement of just under $60,000. And just for the public to understand sort of where that came from, there was an error in billing in fiscal year '24, and then when Harvey's transitioned to a new software system in June of this year, we were overbilled, we were billed based on more tonnage than we had actually created. And so the credits, and then I guess additionally, there was some error where DPW had dropped off tonnage, and it wasn't billed under our contract, it was billed separately. And so any monies owed by Harvey's for the tonnage under that contract are being distributed back to the town as a credit, because we were also charged for that over tonnage from Wheel Abraider, that's coming back in that check that I mentioned. So we'll draft a separate agreement to put that all together, but I was able to provide you with the spreadsheet earlier today, and Shelby, as your representative, was, met with me earlier today with our Public Health Director, and we walked through those numbers as well.
Well, I'll just say thank you to you and Shelby and the team for working through that and figuring that out, so that's good news, in a way. So we always like credits. So any questions? So you're not, yeah, you're looking for a motion to authorize? Yep, so I'll look for.
Yeah, and we just want to add, sorry, just because we're going to also draft that agreement based on those numbers, if you can also authorize me to finalize and draft and execute that as well, if the numbers, actually, we've already agreed on the numbers, we do have that, so we should be all set. As a side letter.
Correct. Sorry, that would be, sorry, into the microphone. As a side letter, not part of the new agreement, a new contract, excuse me.
You feel like you got your arms around that motion? You want to?
Sure, well, Alan was at the mic.
No, you can go.
So I would move to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute a contract with EL Harvey's as presented, and further to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute a side letter agreement summarizing the credits and reimbursement owed to the town.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? I'll take a vote? Those in favor?
Thank God.
Terrific. Thank you, Kristi, again.
Thank you both for your work on this.
A lot of work on it. All right, moving forward to request for appointments to boards and committees. So as we begin this conversation, I'll just say thank you to all that applied to be on boards and committees. We're always looking for people to be on as volunteers to the boards and committees. It's a super vital, vital function to the town for those committees to vital, to function properly. So I just want to say thank you all for showing an interest before we begin this part of our discussion. So with that said.
Sorry, there are some people, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so there are some folks who aren't here yet.
Oh, yeah, quarter, oh, do you want to move on? Sorry?
We can do Braddish Lane.
Can do, what did you say, Alan?
Do you want to do Braddish Lane LIP?
Number nine.
Yeah, sure, we can do that. Kristi, you good with that one? Braddish Lane, the LIP?
Yeah, I'll let Alan take that one.
Okay. So what we have is a local initiative petition. It's a compliance certificate for the property at 1,003 Braddish Lane, Unit 213, that is part of the town's subsidized housing inventory to be sold. Attached are...
One thing that we did include in this contract, based on the discussion at the last meeting, is our, is the recycling cost of $120 a ton for glass and plastic only. And so everything is incorporated. It becomes effective, the effective date will be the date that we sign, and that has a, will go through until June 30th of 2025. And there's an option for extensions, mutual option for two one-year extensions. One of the things that we talked about at the last meeting also was some credits owed, so that was sort of a separate part of the conversation, but we did, we have worked through some of that with Harvey's, and today I think we came to agreement on what those numbers are. So that's a credit due to the town of $80,649. Sorry, $80,649. And then additionally, so that would be a function as a credit, so we would spend down that credit in fiscal '25. And then we would also be provided a reimbursement of just under $60,000. And just for the public to understand sort of where that came from, there was an error in billing in fiscal year '24. And then when Harvey's transitioned to a new software system in June of this year, we were overbilled, we were billed based on more tonnage than we had actually created. And so the credits, and then I guess additionally, there was some error where DPW had dropped off tonnage, and it wasn't billed under our contract, it was billed separately. And so any monies owed by Harvey's for the tonnage under that contract are being distributed back to the town as a credit, because we were also charged for that over tonnage from Wheel Abraider. That's coming back in that check that I mentioned. So we'll draft a separate agreement to put that all together, but I was able to provide you with the spreadsheet earlier today. And Shelby, as your representative, was, met with me earlier today with our public health director, and we walked through those numbers as well.
Well, I'll just say thank you to you and Shelby and the team for working through that and figuring that out. So that's good news, in a way. So we always like credits. So any questions? So you're not, yeah, you're looking for a motion to authorize? Yep, so I'll look for...
Yeah, and we just want to add, sorry, just because we're going to also draft that agreement based on those numbers, if you can also authorize me to finalize and draft and execute that as well, if the numbers, actually, we've already agreed on the numbers. We do have that, so we should be all set. As a side letter, right.
Sorry, that would be, sorry, into the microphone, as a side letter, not part of the new agreement, a new contract, excuse me.
You feel like you got your arms around that motion? You want to?
Sure, well, Alan was at the mic.
So I would move to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute a contract with E.L. Harvey's as presented, and further to authorize the town manager to finalize and execute a side letter agreement summarizing the credits and reimbursement owed to the town.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Thank God.
Terrific. Thank you, Kristi, again.
Thank you both for your work on this.
A lot of work on it. All right, moving forward to request for appointments to boards and committees. So as we begin this conversation, I'll just say thank you to all that applied to be on boards and committees. We're always looking for people to be on as volunteers to the boards and committees. It's a super vital function to the town for those committees to vital, to function properly. So I just want to say thank you all for showing an interest before we begin this part of our discussion. So with that said...
Sorry, there are some people, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so there are some folks who aren't here yet.
Oh, yeah, quarter, oh, do you want to move on? Sorry?
We can do Braddish Lane.
Can do, what did you say, Alan?
Do you want to do Braddish Lane LIP?
Number nine.
Yeah, sure, we can do that. Kristi, you good with that one? Braddish Lane, the LIP?
Yeah, I'll let Alan take that one.
Okay. So what we have is a local initiative petition. It's a compliance certificate for the property at 1,003 Braddish Lane, Unit 213, that is part of the town's subsidized housing inventory to be sold. Attached are, what's been presented to us are the deed rider, the purchase and sale agreement, and the checklist from EO HLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, indicating that the terms and conditions of the sale, the continuation of the affordability are correct and proper, and that the new owner is an eligible buyer with respect to rules about qualifying for affordable housing at the level this is. So the board's motion would be for the town manager to sign off on the board's behalf that we agree that this sale can move forward. I dug into this a little bit, just because the deed modification and the restriction mentions that it's in, the affordable housing is in perpetuity, or the duration of the original permit, whichever is longer. But just to be clear, I went back to 2011, 2012, the original permit for the transit-oriented village does specify that all affordable housing is in perpetuity. And so there's no risk in the future, given the wording that this property could convert to market rate, so, and that is one of the big concerns. Also, the deed rider's been updated, so going forward, the town would have a right of refusal versus only a right of first refusal, which means the Affordable Housing Trust could step in and acquire the property if EO HLC can't find an eligible buyer within the 90-day sale window. It gives us a little more flexibility to act and protect the affordability of the unit.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions?
So I would move to authorize the town manager, Kristi Williams, to sign the compliance certificate for 1,003 Braddish Lane, Unit 213, on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thanks, Alan.
Number 10.
The KP Law.
Yeah, that'll, should be quick as well. So this is the consent to multiple representation on an intermunicipal agreement. We've, we've actually done these before, so KP Law is a very large firm. They're our town council, so they serve as town council to several municipalities. So when we are negotiating agreements with other municipalities that they also represent, they're required to provide this disclosure, and then the board can vote on whether or not you feel that they can move forward on behalf of the town in this negotiation. So this is for the towns of Southborough, Hopkinton, and Westborough are looking to jointly purchase a remote camera for use on sewer and stormwater pipes. And so the agreement, which will come to you separately, is being, currently being reviewed by town council, but ultimately, the lead, the lead party, which I think, which I know is the town of Southborough, would, would house the equipment, and then we would share the use of that equipment. So, you know, certainly working towards the regional goals that I think we've, we've set up when, when it makes sense. But this, what's before you tonight is to just authorize KP Law to continue to represent you in the negotiation of this IMA with the other two communities, for which I think I don't see an issue, you know, the way that it's proposed, so.
And it's, it's not the same individual. So it's two different attorneys.
So I guess I, my question is, and I think you've already answered it, but I just want to make sure, put it out there, is in the, per the letter that was sent by KP Law, it says, "Note that in the unlikely event that negotiations or performance of the agreement breaks down among the parties, to the point where one municipality seeks legal redress from the other, KP Law PC would likely have to cease representing the town of Westborough with regard to the agreement." And that's because, as you said, Southborough's the lead. Is that the reason? I'm assuming that we would, we would then have to go seek other council at that point.
Right. I would expect that, actually, I would expect that we both would, and then the board would have to choose special counsel at that point.
Okay. Any other further comments or questions? So you need a motion to sign this, right?
Yeah, I would, I would move to consent to, I'd make the motion to consent to KP Law PC representing the town of Westborough in conjunction with the IMA for the purchase of remote cameras for utility purposes, to which the town of Southborough is a party as disclosed in the letter dated September 13th, 2024, notwithstanding that KP Law PC also serves as special counsel to the town of Southborough.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? You got a minute? Still got 10 minutes.
Minutes and town manager report.
Yeah, okay, let's do minutes.
I would. I would move the approval of the meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2024, and September 10th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Seela.
Yes, Seela, thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, and moving on. Kristi, you want to do a town manager report?
So we have several town employment opportunities, so we invite folks to, to look at the human resource page on the town's website. Positions are available across the Department of Public Works, Planning Department, Assessor, and the town manager's office. So in our office specifically, our HR coordinator position is open, as well as our management analyst communications assistant. Moving on to the select board meetings, so the select board is meeting this evening because we moved the meeting from the 24th to tonight, but we are meeting again next week on October 8th, per the regular schedule. And then just noting that the October 22nd meeting is planned to be held in the Great Hall due to early in-person voting for the presidential election, which will take place in this room from October 19th to the 29th. A community center update, so at your meeting on October 8th, well, the design team will be here to present the updated preferred option to the, to the select board. This is a required deliverable under their current contract, which included full schematic design and cost estimates, so look forward to hearing, so seeing those designs and hearing updated estimates. Also, the community center, the recreation department has moved in, and they are, they are programming there, and they, they are also offering, as one of their programs, guided tours, which are free to the public. They're requesting that folks sign up for them, but you don't have to, but it's October 1st, 3rd, and the 7th. Last week, we held, we had the budget summit, which was the kickoff to the FY26 budget season. So there was a tribe board meeting of the select board, advisory finance committee, and the school committee. It was recorded by Westborough TV, so I'd encourage residents to view that as we move into budget season. Very exciting news, the town was awarded, notified today that we have been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for the fifth year in a row. We are particularly proud of this accomplishment this year, given all the turnover in the finance department. So special thanks to the finance team, our new finance director, John Steinberg, assistant town manager, Kim Foster, and town accountant, Allison Lawrence, for their work on both creation of the budget and then also application for the award. In information technology, we were awarded a grant of $40,500 from the municipal local cybersecurity grant program. This grant will cover the cost to develop a written cybersecurity incident response plan and implement tabletop exercises involving cross-functional staff members, including senior leadership, to exercise test and refine the written cyber incident response plan. Just wanted to note that Mark, our IT director, takes full advantage of this program, is often, I'm often reporting to you all the grants that he is seeking, so really able to offset costs for technology through these different programs. The library had a successful banned books week on September 22nd to 28th, and celebrated with a talk from Jeff Raymond on the 25th. He's a journalist, former editor of the Millbury Sutton Chronicle, and current reporter for the Bramenville Time Tribune. They also, the patron feedback that they received is listed within the report, but included that it was a great presentation, loved seeing lots of teens in the audience. In September, we celebrated National Library Card Sign-Up Month, as we, as they partnered with the local downtown businesses to offer discounts to patrons who showed their library card. So in total, they signed up 331 people for new cards or renewals in the month of September. In the planning department, the new assistant town planner position was filled by promoting the existing administrative assistant, Kristen Belanger, from within the department. So they're now, we are now looking for a new administrative assistant. The planning department's been working on updating the master plan action items by reaching out to each department. The department also continues to work with the implementation of the BWALT through design of Section 2 and finalizing easements along Otis Street for Section 1. The planning board recently approved 109-unit multifamily development at 25 Connector Road. This was at the Sonesta property, which will consist of one and two bedroom units with a 25% affordability component. So that counts towards our subsidized housing inventory. And then in the town clerk's office, they wanted voters to know the ballots for the state election have not arrived from the state. Once received, there are 4,500 ballot requests that the office will be fulfilling. The town clerk hopes to have the first batch of ballots delivered to the post office starting on Friday, October 4th, and then continuing into the following week. Early voting in person, as we mentioned, starts on Saturday, October 19th, and goes through Friday, November 1st. Dates and times are available on the website, and all early voting takes place in this building at Town Hall.
Thank you, Kristi.
If I may make a quick comment, well, two. One, congratulations again on the award on the budget book. A reminder that to residents and people watching, if you haven't looked at the budget books and you look at our current budget, you'll notice it starts with a high-level summary of what it is and priorities. It then goes down into departments. Every line item in our budget relates to text about departmental priorities, mission goals, long-term plans, and short-term plans. And so you can correlate, where's the money going, what's it for, and how are we, and every department provides measures that measure their performance against those goals. And so it is a lot of work, but it really provides, as wonky and as detailed you want to go, you can go to understand where every dollar gets spent. And the second comment is, I would like to extend thanks to Mark Stockman for continuing to be so aggressive with cybersecurity evaluation improvements. I'll point out to the board that earlier this year in June, the town of Arlington discovered that they were a victim of what's known as a business email compromise attack, and they had sent a contractor payment in the amount of $445,945 to scammers and not to the contractor. And that money is gone. My understanding is, working with law enforcement, they've been able to recover a little less than $4,000. And so it is important. So thank you.
Yeah, I just, real quick as a comment on the GFOA on the budget, I just want to share with the community, the first paragraph of the letter that the town received. So it states, "A panel of independent reviewers have completed their examination of your annual budget document for the period beginning July 2024. We are pleased to inform you that your budget document has been awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Financial Officers Association. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting. Its attainment represents a significant achievement by your organization." And I would just echo what Kristi has said in regards to the challenges in that department in regards to, you know, the new employees and various different changes that have gone in the department. To still achieve this is pretty significant. So I do want to express my thanks to her department for, for doing this and making this happen, so congratulations.
Thank you.
With that said, do we get to, nope, we're still two minutes shy. We're good now? All right. So thank you all for bearing with us. We'll move on to our appointments, request for appointments to boards and committees. Let me get to the right page here. A lot of documents tonight.
Would you like motions on the two for which there's only?
Yeah, I was just going to ask for that, so please.
Okay. So I move to appoint Holly Kenny to the cultural council for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
And that leaves eight vacancies on the cultural council, correct? For folks that don't.
So I move to appoint Sean Brosnahan, John Gallinaw, and Michael Van Nest to the Veterans' Advisory Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I'd just like to say thank you again to them for their service.
In fact, that, that leaves one vacancy still on the Veterans Advisory Board.
One more vacancy, yeah. Okay, we'll move on to council and aging. Anybody you'd like to?
Are there folks?
That's right. Is there anyone in the, in the audience? I don't see Boyd, Jean Grantfield, Murtha Leslie, and Carrie Macasinian. You're welcome to come up and introduce yourself if you'd like. You don't have to, but it'd be great to hear from you.
Can you just explain why we just did appointments? Well, so my request, Patrick, sorry, is that just maybe explain to the public present as well as watching, why we just did some appointments? And it sort of just seemed like, like quick and dumb.
So, so the previous two committees, the number of appointments was the same or less than the number of openings. So we were able to do a quick vote through that process to, to do that. Now, these particular committees that we're now moving to talk about are committees that have more people who are interested than there are positions. So we're asking those people to come up and talk if they would like, to share who they are and what their interest is, and then we'll have a discussion and make a decision in regards to who we appoint. So, welcome, please introduce yourself.
Thank you. My name is Jean Grantfield. I'm a retired OR nurse. I call myself retired. I actually still work. One day, we per diem, just can't seem to give it up. I moved to Westborough about three years ago from the North Shore area. I had family down this area, some, a daughter in Westborough, daughter in Southborough, and I just fell in love with all that Westborough had to offer. Recently, I was appointed to the Active Transportation and Safety Committee, and we had our ribbon-cutting ceremony last couple of weeks ago for the first section of the BWALT to be finished, and it was lovely. That being said, I would like to get more involved with the town. I would strive to get the Del Webb community, did I, I think I didn't mention that. I live at 55-plus Del Webb, Chancal Lake community. And I would really like to get them involved in the community, in the town, as well as get involved in the seniors center, which I feel would have a lot to offer them. Many, for many years, I instructed the elderly population in exercise groups, and here I am in that population now. My empathy as a nurse and desire to stay healthy, active, and safe in the area brings me to the path that I want to lead and advocate for the seniors in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come speak on behalf of council and aging, if you can see?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. So my name is Murtha Leslie, and I live at 4 Peters Farm Way. And three years ago, I moved from Florida to Massachusetts. You may ask why? Well, I have two grandchildren, and that's all I need to say. One and a half years ago, I bought a condo at Chauncey Lake, and I met so many wonderful people, and it was, that it was, made the transition very, very easy. And I also fell in love with the town. This is the smallest town I've ever lived in, and I saw a real opportunity to get involved and perhaps even make a difference. So also, best of all, I still live 20 minutes away from my two grandchildren. And there are three things I thought I'd share with you. First, I was born in Cuba and raised in New York, and I speak Spanish fluently, thanks to my mother, who insisted we speak Spanish at home, so I'm very grateful to her. Second, I love, in case you didn't get this the first time, I love being a grandmother, and I love being called abuela, because that goes back to my roots, that's grandmother in Spanish. And third thing I want to share is that I have no idea how I became a senior citizen. So, you know, one day, I was a single parent, raising two children, working full-time. Next day, I was retired and caring for my elderly mother who had developed dementia and lived the last two years of her life homebound. and lived the last two years of her life homebound. So it was a quick on-the-job training for me as to how to take care of her the best way, which to me was a real privilege. And so I, I think what I can bring is, number one, a fresh perspective, because I haven't lived in Westboro that long. And number two, my life experience. I do have a bit of a, I do have a bit of a sweet spot for elderly people. And I, and I also can bring my professional experience. I worked as a client manager for many, many years, and trying to bridge the needs of the corporation with the needs of the client requires very good listening skills and a lot of consensus building. So I think that those skills would be very useful in the council of aging. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi. My, my name is Carrie Maxian, and I'm at 260 East Main Street. I am coming before you today to express my interest in this position with the Council on Aging Board. I am a longtime resident in Westboro, and I have four very active children with my husband in town here. I am active within the schools and trying to be active within the greater community as they get older and they start school, take up less time at home. I believe that being active, I believe in being active in the community in which you live, and involvement for me has been volunteering for various groups, attending meetings when I can, for town events as often as I can. My engagement within the community provides me with the opportunity to see our town from a variety of vantage points and interact with community members of all ages. As an occupational therapist, I have developed extensive experience and depth of knowledge in active listening skills, compassion, patience, and adaptability. I also focus, as an occupational therapist, on educating others, working with what materials I have been presented with. I enjoy the challenge of thinking outside of the box. Currently, I am working at a local bookshop and practicing occupational therapy on the side. But my practice encompasses not only children, but also adults, providing educational consultations, home accommodations, rehabilitative exercises and such. The importance of helping others learn how to best adapt and function within their natural environment is critical for setting the strong foundation for caregiver carryover. And I thoroughly enjoy helping patients and their caregivers create function and balance. I have a deep passion for helping others with their, their natural environment. I really believe in blending rehabilitative care with alternative holistic approaches and really believe in intergenerational approaches to all living. I have developed not only the technical skills, but I really think that I have the soft skills, empathy, creativity, and clear communication, so that I hope that I can serve the community as best my ability.
Thank you very much. I don't see Mr. Conklin here, so I'll just say before I open up for discussion with the board, it's a, it's a wonderful problem for us to have to choose between three such wonderful candidates for such an important committee in the town. So thank you very much for all three of you putting your names in the hat. And if you're not chosen, I certainly encourage you to continue to be part of the town. We're always looking for people to join various different boards and committees, and there's a lot going on in the community, a lot of different interests that you may have that you may be able to participate in elsewhere. So again, thank you very much for, for putting your name in the hat, and at this point in time, I'll open up to the board to see what comments they have.
Would it be possible to ask a question of the candidates who are here?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, and we could just maybe go in the order?
Same order that you all.
And this isn't a quiz. I know, I see, I'm getting the, I didn't sign up for this.
Maybe you should introduce yourself as a representative.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I should back up. So I'm Shelby, and I'm the liaison from this board to the council and aging. So as to best of my ability, I attend as many of the council and aging meetings as I can, have been very involved in the community center as we all have project in, attending as many of those meetings. I should also let all the members, excuse me, residents know, our board has a monthly meeting at the council and aging called Bagels with the Board, so we all get an opportunity to interact with members of the community who just come to the senior center to meet with us, as well as to hang out with the department head who attends that meeting. So we all have visibility to it. I just happen to be the liaison to that committee. So my question is, and if our chair allows, I have two questions, but I'll take the one for now. And that is, I'm interested, what I've heard repeatedly, we saw it in our senior needs assessment, is sort of twofold, which is, how do we sort of bring the council and aging up to sort of a more contemporary level? That doesn't mean leaving anyone out, but just being more inclusive of our community and broadening the reach of the work of the council and aging. So I'm curious to know kind of any ideas that you have, maybe what prompted you to come here and to be appointed or to seek appointment? So how would you broaden the reach and the work of the council and aging? And if you're, you're welcome to share your ideas, and if you're not, I'm not going to hold it against you, but I am very interested.
I think that was one question.
I think it was a long question.
Well, and whatever, sure. Sure. Sure, yes, please. So the rest of the community can hear. Unfortunately, through Westboro TV, the folks out there can't hear unless you're, you're standing at the podium, so.
Thanks for the reminder.
You are on TV.
You are.
Just, she was getting comfortable.
I, I know, I know. Hopefully, I still have lipstick on. So, you know, as, as I've been aging, I've been making some observations, and we can't really lump all senior citizens together. I think you almost have to break them up into, into thirds. And so what a, maybe a 60-to-70-year-old can do is, is not what a, you know, 80-to-90-year-old can do. And I, what, what I think there's a need for is different levels of classes. You always have to, I think, be a resource for services and delivery systems, because when you, when you need them, there's a, it's a desperate need. And so that is, will always continue. If we're lucky, we all age. And aging well, I think, should be everyone's priority. And, but also, you know, exercise classes and social interaction, you know, is also very important. But I, I think it's important to offer the younger tier a little bit more advanced, advanced classes, you know, even bringing people that maybe have, are still working or considering retirement, making sure that there's more education. So, you know, that's what I would like to see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not great with being put on the spot with this, but the thing that I've noticed that I find challenging, I guess, within the community is my parents, not to put them on the spot either, are, are also part of this community. And I said to them before, I was like, but you're not senior citizens. I, I really feel like there, like the other lady had just said, that there are different groups. There has to be some bridging in between of, of services provided and needs and, and wants. And some of that has to come from listening to what the needs and the wants are and outreach to those people as well. I feel like they're a little bit protected back in the corner where they were, and I'm hoping that we can have more interactions between all the generations of people, and it's not quite so closed off as a, as a group. Because I do feel like, as a group, they have a lot to offer. I am not a senior citizen yet, but I do feel like they have a lot to offer, and I would love to be able to work with them on that.
So first off, I have to completely agree with Murtha, that we all age differently. It brings me back to a time when I put my parents in assisted living. They were in their 80s, and we went and we saw the place a few times. And I'll never forget my mom saying, "But everybody's so old here." And I thought, Mom, they're your age, or maybe even younger. So we all age differently. So I don't know if you can actually put it in 60s, 70s, 80s, because we all age differently. But I do believe that we have to have programs that accommodate, I don't know whether you want to say, people that are more physically able to do things than the older group, but I don't think it's necessarily always by age. My mom was very active, walked every day of her life, and that's why I think she thought she was so, and, and compared to a lot of people, she was. So I think if I was to get on the committee, that's my goal, just to get everything set so that everybody had something to go to. I personally, myself, moved to Del Webb, and I find a lot of the things there, again, more for older people. Now, there's probably a lot of them my age, I'm 71. But I, I wish there was something a little more towards my likes, and so that's what I would aim to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll ask if any of those, anyone else on the board has any questions? Has Shelby just given that opportunity? Nope? Okay. Open it up for discussion.
Do you want to jump in?
Well, I would just say, you know, I don't think we're going to make a wrong choice. I'd say to the three candidates, thank you all for coming here this evening. It is an 11-person board with staggered three-year terms, so certainly for two of you, there are going to be other opportunities to get on this board. It also, the meetings are open, so you do not have to be on the council of aging to attend their meetings. They meet the second Monday of every month at 1:00 over at the senior center. And so you can feel free to go over there and meet the other members of the council, get to know them, and provide your feedback to them, which I'm sure they will incorporate. So, you know, although we can only choose one today, certainly you can all three get involved, and thank you for just getting involved tonight.
So try not to be redundant in Sean's comments, otherwise you say ditto to that. I think it's really important, so again, thank you, because we can never say thank you enough to volunteers who step forward. I can't say enough that it's really important that as we go through a transition in our council and aging director, who has announced her retirement, I think it's a great opportunity for the council and aging members to really come forward and kind of represent themselves in an enhanced way, so building off on the work of, of the success of the past. I will also be a little more specific in the rules of the, or the terms, excuse me, of the council members. There are like four or five, just at a quick glance, whose terms end June 2025. So if you're not selected today, please don't walk away and go, "Oh, it wasn't me, and I'm not doing this again." I would encourage you to, as Sean said, attend the meetings, get involved, have your voice heard. They are a very welcoming group, but candidly, could use a lot more interaction from what can be a little bit of an insular body, just kind of talking to themselves. So with that, I'll, I'll hold, I mean, I have a motion I'd like to put forward, but I'd love to hear from the other boards.
Okay.
Board members, excuse me.
Yeah?
No, not too repetitive. I mean, this is tough. I mean, it's, it's three, I think, qualified individuals. I appreciate all of them being here. And, yeah, I think it's, it's gonna be difficult to choose one of the three. I agree we won't go wrong, but I also feel bad that two won't get chosen, but, but that's our job to do. So I think, thank you for answering the question. I know it's not easy to do. Thank you for asking it, but I think they were all, all very good answers and, and different answers as well. But, yeah.
So we're as part of what we do.
Yeah.
Did you?
No, I've made my.
Just one thing, I do want to note, it's my understanding Mr. Conklin's not here because he's participating in the Civic Leadership Academy.
Yeah, true. Good point.
Thank you.
It's not because he didn't want to be here, he has a conflict.
Thank you. So, again, thank you to everyone. It really is the worst part of what we have to do here, but we only have one seat, so we've got to make that decision. So I, I, I think that, given my experience on the, working with the council and aging and spending a lot of time there, having a mother-in-law who spends a lot of time there, and just sort of observing both the internal workings of the, what happens at the senior center, as well as the community's input and feedback, I think that Murtha Leslie's experience in kind of the client management, client relationship, the need for communication, bringing the outside in particularly resonated with me. I, I think, again, all, all things being equal, I think she's sort of like edged out as part of her, what was presented in the materials that the board received as well as tonight. And so with that, I would be making a motion to appoint Murtha Leslie to this position. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact motion in front of me, but that would be my motion. There's probably a term in there, and I don't have it.
2027.
Thank you. So I would, I would move to appoint Murtha Leslie to the council and aging for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I think the one thing that, for Murtha too, is the bilingual nature, which is something is, in, is Westboro becomes more diverse, and our seniors become more diverse. I think it is something that's helpful, so I appreciate that being brought up as, of one of her comments. So just wanted to add that in there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ian. Any other comments? All those in favor? Thank you, Murtha, and thank you also for the other candidates.
Thank you, Jean and Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Conklin, again, not here, but.
All right, moving on to the appointment for Sustainable Westboro. I believe we have two candidates and one vacancy.
He said the same thing, Mr. Conklin.
Mr. Conklin.
Applied for that, but is not here because of conflict.
Yep, and is Ms. Perronce here? Welcome. Would you like to come introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Say if you were. It's terrific. Thank you.
So I'm Donna, Donna Perronez. I live at 35 Water Street here in Westboro. I moved to Westboro in 1995 because I was working for Astra US. I'm originally from Pennsylvania. I'm interested in, oh, first of all, let me say thank you for this opportunity to talk to you guys tonight. I'm interested in joining Sustainable Westboro because environmental conservation is a longtime passion of mine and a longtime interest. And I've personally been very committed to it because I've been putting, or my husband and I have been putting the money into it at home by installing solar panels and putting in heat pumps, and we've been converting our garden by replanting with native plants. And because all of these things are important for, you know, creating a sustainable, livable future. future on our planet. And so that's a passion of mine. My education, I have a degree in biology. I've done coursework in environmental science, and I understand the need to reduce our carbon emissions to address the climate crisis. And I believe very strongly that we need to do that. I also understand that sustainability efforts have to, you know, preferably also benefit our community in the short term. So like, for example, I mentioned native plants. They're very important for supporting our pollinators, our native insects, our birds, and our wildlife. And so I would like to see, you know, an effort in that direction in Westboro, which, you know, beautifies our community as well as making it more sustainable and environmentally sound. I have worked in the pharmaceutical industry for over thirty years, mostly with an emphasis on cancer research. I'm now unemployed only part-time, so now I have some more time in my schedule to give back to the community, which is why I'm here, you know, applying to be on the committee. And because of my experience in the pharma industry, working in data management, I have some background and experience with, you know, complying with government regulations, understanding government regulations and guidelines, and, and compliance with those. So I feel like my education and my experience, my professional experience, and my passion for the cause would benefit the committee, and so I'm hoping to do that. So, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. So I'll just remind the town that this is a, an appointment that is, term to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, so it's a little under two-year commitment. Not seeing Mr. Conklin. Again, thank you for his submission as well. I'll just look for additional discussion.
I mean, I just had discussion, I probably should have said it in the last one, I think, for, for Mr. Conklin, in looking through what was submitted, I didn't get a feel, and it's not faulting him for not being here, because I understand there's a conflict, but from his application, I didn't get, out of that application, why he wanted, really wanted to be on that committee. It was a little bit more generic. The same submission was for the Council on Aging and Sustainable Westboro. So I was unable to kind of pull out of why, in this case, specifically for Sustainable Westboro. So I'm ready to make a motion on this one, but I'd like to hear all those comments as well.
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate you pointing that out. I, I actually, it was very generic, but more importantly, Ms. Perrance is, I hope I said that correctly. I, it was very clear to me, kind of her passion and interest, and although I appreciate the additional information around native plants, I think that's something I don't think we're talking a lot about, so I think that that's like a whole other leg of the work potentially that Sustainable Westboro could work on, and I'm sure our garden club friends would be very interested in learning more about that and working with you. And so for that reason, I think she's a compelling candidate for appointment.
And I'll just say that being our liaison onto Sustainable Westboro, she certainly has the right passions, I think, to support all the activities that we're currently managing in that committee, so, and I would certainly echo what Ian said in regards to Mr. Conklin's submission. I didn't have a sense of what his, his desire was, what his passion for Sustainable Westboro was. So I would be very supportive as well of Mrs. Perrance, and apologies for this pronunciation earlier. So I'll look for a motion if there's no further.
Yeah, I would move to appoint Donna Perrance to Sustainable Westboro for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second? I heard, I heard Sean. Yeah, sorry.
He was louder.
Just like that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much for being willing to serve. Looking forward to see you at the meetings. Okay, moving on to the Youth Commission. We have two positions, seats available on the Youth Commission. One is expiring, a term expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and the second one expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. We have four candidates, Mr. Kater, I'm not going to pronounce this right if you're here, Mr. Kater Embone, Mrs. Reed, and Ms. Schuman, and Mr. Weiner. So I'll, if you're welcome, come on up, if you'd like to introduce yourself, please.
How you doing? Well, thank you very much for having me here. I have to say, I was going to be at the Academy, Leadership Academy, tonight, but I decided to come here. And I want to thank you all for giving me and my wife the opportunity to go through that experience. It is wonderful, and I think Owen did a fantastic job, and is really done well by the town.
That's great to hear.
Why am I interested? Well, quite frankly, I got fifty years' experience working with kids. I've been a clinical social worker for the past forty-five years. I've worked in every type of aspect of youth work. I've started and led town, Bedford, the Bedford Youth and Family Services. I've worked in McLean's Hospital, I've worked in all kinds of settings. But I'm here because I want to give to my community. I'm retired, I worked in schools for the past twenty years. I want to be active in the community. To answer your question that you asked earlier, we are embarking on having a multi-generational center. We're going to have kids there. We're going to have elderly who have reservations about kids and how to share space with kids. What a nice bridge we would have if we have an old geezer like me, working with teens and working to build that bridge. I think that what this town has is a unique opportunity right now to set a new course and to be really innovative in terms of what they do. Now, my drawback is, I've only been here two years, so I don't really know the town. But that's not a new experience for me. Every time I started a new job, it was in a new community. So I think I can bridge that gap, and I think I am a quick learner. But I really do feel very strongly that the experience that I have, I work towards consensus. I think that building consensus and building a network with parents and kids, because you're not just working with the kid, you're working with families. And I think that if we can build that bridge, and we can build those through consensus, we're going to have a strong program, and we're going to have kids. I've worked in the past, well, probably fifteen years on restorative practice, working with police departments and courts, working with schools. I was a trainer up until June of this year for mass, mass youth. And I think it's ideas of helping kids learn empathy, helping kids learn to listen, helping kids to develop the moral compass of understanding that there's a cause and effect when they have behavior, and that it impacts others. And how we can teach kids is by giving them good examples. So even if I don't get on tonight, I know it's a tough decision for you guys, but even if I don't get on tonight, you're going to still see me. In Italian, we say, you gotta be facchadas, right? So my middle name is Vito, and wearing my Jimmy Carter pin today, he was a guy who gave a lot to us. And I think it's important that we give back. We're going to be a community that's going to have almost a thousand residents here, and we're going to have a voice. We're going to be voters. Old folks vote all the time, so, you know, we're going to try to get our people involved in community government, and tonight's an example of that. So I want to thank you for your consideration. And if you have any questions, you know, I'm very comfortable in answering them.
Appreciate that. Welcome to the community, and I appreciate you being willing to come talk to us tonight, and certainly applying, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate your consideration. You guys have a great night.
Thank you.
Is Shaquan Reed here? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Shaquan Reed. Thank you for having me this evening. I haven't run in for anything since like the seventh grade, so this is new. What's lovely about this is it's like it's a competition, just looking like at all the people who are coming up tonight to speak and to share, all want to give to the community. So similar to what, I'm going to call you my colleague now, just shared, I think that everyone would be wonderful for this committee, so this commission. So I'll share a bit about myself. I live at two fifty-nine West Main Street here in town. I've lived in Westboro for about ten years now. I have two kids in the school system, at Gibbons and at Mill Pond, and it's been wonderful to see them grow and thrive. And I, one of the things that was really important to me right now is to figure out ways to give back to my community. I was a girls' cult leader for five years, so my daughter found dance, and I haven't really found something to, to, to share with the community again. And so I was looking for ways to actually partner with Westboro Youth and Family Services, and this, this opening showed up, and so it seemed like a good opportunity. I'm really committed to, and actually share the mission of Westboro Youth and Family Services, which is to strengthen the emotional and social well-being of individuals and families. And I also mirror a lot of the ways that they do that in my work. I'm a licensed mental health counselor. I run a private practice here in town. My specialty areas are racial trauma, treating ACES, so treating intergenerational trauma. Sorry, I get a little nervous when I'm talking in front of crowds, so I might start talking a little fast and shimmying a little bit, so I'm going to get myself together.
You're doing great.
So ACES are adverse childhood experiences, and I do that through a lot of somatic modalities. I'm, I train other clinicians and EMDR, and brain spotting, and yoga, and movement, and bringing those practices. I, I don't see children, I see families. I know that children, even when I work with younger folks, they are part of a system, and our, these family systems are part of a community. And so I share the mission of doing this work through direct service, make sure there's access to resources. I do a lot of work of teaching folks how to navigate and heal their nervous systems, because if you can be calm and take care of your body, and co-regulate with the folks around you, you can help decrease intergenerational trauma. We can stop these patterns and break these patterns at an earlier age. And so I work primarily with parents around that work. I also do a lot of educational work. I started a wellness practice to provide education around how to take care of yourself, how to, again, heal your nervous system, and I provide monthly, so if anyone ever wants to come to it, it's called, it's a program called Mind Your Mental Health, it's totally free. It's virtual. I'll send you the link if you'd like to participate and share with others. Why I teach people how to, that we have the capacity to shift our state, that we can, when we're in a state of safety, we actually can be in connection with other people, that allows us to really get things done and have lives in which we're no longer just surviving, but really thriving. I've worked with adolescents for over twenty years, particularly in higher ed, so helping high school students transitioned over that hump into college. Both in residence life, I've been an associate student of students, I've taught as an adjunct faculty member, I've run transitional, a transitional scholars program for students with intellectual developmental disabilities. I've worked supporting students with food and housing insecurity. I was going through my resume list here, I'm like, oh, it's a bunch of stuff here. And I also run college prep programs, helping students transition into college. And I think that's what I have on my list. I also certify, do perinatal mental health as well, so do a lot of stuff, and I just want to bring all those skills, those tools, to the Westboro community. And so if it's through the commission, that'll be dope. If it's in other ways, that's fantastic, too. So I hope that if you have any questions, I'll be sitting over there. Feel free to reach out.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. See you soon.
I see Bethida, would you like to share with us? While Bethida's coming up, I'll just ask, I probably should have asked at the beginning, is there an interest, there's two different terms here, so is there any interest in one term versus another? No, okay, Shaquan, sir?
I expressed an interest in the shorter one.
Shorter one, okay.
At my age, you never know.
Okay, apologize, I missed that earlier, so thank you. Bethida, welcome, come on up.
Thank you for letting me introduce myself. I'm Bethida Schuman, and I live at twenty-one Bayard Lane. I've lived in Westboro since nineteen seventy-one. And most of the work that I did was for the state. I worked for several different state agencies, starting with Worcester State Hospital in the Social Service Department for about two and a half to three years, and then we adopted my son, and so I stopped working there for a while. And then after that, my work was with what was, what is now known as DSS. Back then, it was a very different name, and I worked in the adoption unit. Actually did a lot of delivering babies from the hospital in my car with no seatbelt or no, nothing, just on the backseat of my car, delivering the babies to the foster homes, where they would stay before they would get adopted. Very interesting. I had to get the babies and then go to the store and buy a layout. So I had to hold the baby in my arms. It was very interesting. It was a fun job, but I can't even imagine that today. And then after that, I worked for the Office for Children, which was an agency that was founded to help kids who fell through the cracks. So it was a very interesting organization, because you had to learn about the state laws, the health laws, the laws about kids in courts. You had to know a little bit of everything. In that job, I became a supervisor, and I was in charge of the central mass areas. So I traveled around to the area offices and supervised the advocates in those offices who actually did some of the work. I had started as an advocate and worked there for about eleven years, and the last five years, I was the supervisor. After that, I worked for the Department of Mental Retardation, again, another agency that's changed its name. That was, again, a very interesting job for me. I worked there for eleven years and, again, became a supervisor after several years, and had a caseload as well as being a supervisor. So I have a wide variety of experiences with different ages of people. In my job at, here in the town, at Youth and Family Services, I dealt with people from three years to eighty-two years. So I have had those experiences and enjoyed them. I do have another child. I have two children who went through the Westboro schools, and who are now living close by, but not in Westboro, but close enough that I get to see them, which is great. After I stopped working at Youth and Family Services, I continued to attend the meetings. I used to attend the Youth Commission meetings because I was an employee of Youth and Family Services, but because I was very interested in what continues to happen with youth in this town and families, I continued. So I have been going to the meetings now for quite a while, just as a, as a citizen. I would like to also tell you that I have had a long time to learn about the different agencies that serve our citizens here in Westboro. So I think that is a big help to knowing maybe how to get services. I think that Westboro has a lot of agencies, a lot of organizations and committees that exist. I sometimes wonder if it would be more beneficial if we got together more often with the other agencies, because sometimes we tend to overlap, and you can't help that if you have a lot of agencies, particularly those who are interested in providing services for the citizens of the town. So I, I'm just very concerned with what So I, I'm just very concerned with what services we can continue to provide and what services we may need. And we get that information at the Youth Commission meetings, because we have youth members as well as adults. I've been around long enough that when the Youth Commission was first started, when I was first employed, it was a committee that did actual hiring and firing of the person who was in charge. So I, it has evolved, revolved, and it has grown. And I think that having youth on that commission board is great, because we really get a good understanding of what the kids need, what they want, and what they see. So thank you very much for letting me talk tonight.
Thank you. Look for Mr. Weiner. Bethida, did you have a preference on the, on the, on?
Yeah.
Neither one, okay. Welcome.
Hello.
Just raise that microphone up to you a little bit there, perfect.
I'm Joshua Weiner. I'm a senior at the high school. This is my second year on the Youth Commission as an associate member. I've gone to every meeting during that time to understand how the commission works and how I can participate in it. And it's important to have youth representation in government, especially since there's a large gap between what the youth need and what the government hears and sees. And I learned that during my time, the summer when I interned for Representative Kate Donahue. I was able to learn a lot from that and hear different representatives and senators say how important representation in local government is and how important it is to be part of different commissions and boards to have a lot of representation. And through that, I was able to research different, research things for the town with the moderator and learn more about government and how Westboro's government works. And I see my future in politics. I really enjoy government, political work. I really enjoyed my time at the State House and.
Terrific. Well, thank you for coming and talking with us tonight.
Thank you.
And do you have a preference for the, the term of, of the appointment? Either it'd be one and a half years or two and a half years?
Yeah.
Thank you. So that said, fantastic applicants. Again, another tough decision. Great to have so many wonderful resources in our community. I'll open it up to the board.
Just make a quick comment. So I'm the SLIC Board liaison to the Youth Commission, and so have a little insight into it. I want to say thank you to Mr. Weiner. I have, I don't make all the meetings. I try to make as many as I can. I think all of them I've attended, I've seen him, and he has contributed consistently. And I'm, and I'm grateful and thank you for your active participation on the Youth Commission, so. As well as, I also see Ms. Schuman all the time. I'll say that as well. Thank you. Yeah, and, and just, I think, you know, same as before, you know, a wonderful problem for us to have up here again. Thank you to everybody. And again, for those who weren't selected, please show up. And, and I know that Richard said he would and stuff. It is a terrific committee. It is evolving. In this past year, actually just in the last few months, we've moved from having a direct review of services to contracting these services through an organization. And they're coming to these meetings and talking through the programs, and they're trying to learn about the town as they're getting involved. So the Youth Commission right now is as important as ever, as they're looking to come up with other creative ways to support youth in, in mental health in this town. So with that, thank, thank you all for, for coming here tonight. And I look forward to hopefully seeing all of you at those meetings. Thank you.
Any other comments?
So again, thank you, everyone, for your interest, your application, your willingness to step forward and serve the community. As I think about appointments, I think about the commission. As Sean mentioned, with, with the change in structure of Westboro Youth and Family Services, it's a, it's a very critical point in its, in its continued evolution. We're already seeing that through this arrangement, we're able to significantly expand the number of counseling cases that the organization can handle. And that growth in service delivery with the Youth Commission is advisory to it. Really, the Youth Commission will play a role in helping set priorities for, you know, the area focus, for additional clinicians that may be needed, the types of counseling services, the direction of the, you know, the clinical side and the community's need on the clinical side of the operation. The other side to community, to Youth and Family Services now, is resources and outreach. We have a coordinator in that position full-time, who is active and involved in the community, identifying needs and helping respond and connecting residents with resources. And so the other component for me in considering who, which two of these excellent candidates, I think, could best serve the commission is, you know, recognizing that we need broad representation of our community on this commission, and we need people with different connections throughout the community. So, for example, in my work with the Housing Trust, we have a working group. Our coordinator for community outreach and resources is part of that working group as we're preparing to launch an emergency rental assistance program. Where residents of Westboro who might be facing eviction or facing rent increases could get interim assistance until they can apply and qualify for the state programs, which can take several months to go through that paperwork and that process. And so I work with Youth and Family Services and, and other area nonprofits in the past in this area, has shown that one of the biggest challenges is actually getting the word out to the members and segments of our community that probably most need that resource, because they're often less connected to the rest of the community. And so I think, I think about that in my consideration. And so I would ask my fellow board members to take those into consideration as well.
Again, did you have any comments?
No.
No, no comments. I mean, well, I mean, just a phenomenal interest. I thank every resident who's come forward. And this is a really tough decision. And I, my understanding, Sean, keep me honest here, is that the Youth Commission is, well, runs, it's an open meeting process. It's a pretty open meeting, right? It encourages all attendees to really kind of provide input, voting or non-voting member. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So if you're not selected and you really have a passion for this and an interest, I would encourage you to continue to attend. And as we, as we've talked about with other seats, there's always a rolling term coming up of other seats, so.
Okay, so I, I'll just say that, you know, one of the things that I find really important as we look at committee appointments and that we've done in the past with other committees is to look at the participation of the individuals and their, you know, their passion for whatever that committee, that function is, is, is working on and tasked with. So I, I look at, you know, past dedication. I look at past participation. Certainly, I'll say institutional knowledge of the history of what has been successful or not successful in the committee in the past, as the committee looks. I also look at the variation in age. I think that it's wonderful to see diversity in the four candidates. You know, because that really does share with us what the community, the community looks like and how, what the community's going to be dealing with in the Youth Commission. So I appreciate all of the candidates coming and talking with us tonight. And I'll echo, I don't want to repeat, but I'll just echo what Shelby and others have already said in regards to the importance and your participation moving forward. That, that said, I, I would like to make a motion myself to move to appoint Bethida Schuman to the Youth Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. I'll look for a second.
I will second it for further discussion if, if folks want.
Any further discussion?
I, I, I look at the current composition of the commission and the change in structure and the need for that change of structure to be fully supported by the commission members as we move forward. And I also think it's at a time where it's critical that we have new voices and new input into the process. Because part of, part of the reason for this change was because there were things that weren't working. And there were systemic issues with Youth and Family Services in the past. And while that's, you know, one component of this change, I mean, we definitely were struggling to find staffing, we're struggling to find a director. In, in part, that was because some of the difficulties the organization was having with the implementation of its mission at times, as well as the current market. And so I feel, you know, given the four candidates, we've got another candidate who's actively involved from the commission side, and we've got two fresh voices that could bring additional perspective, at the same time, bring a very broad, diverse array of expertise in the counseling services, but also in community involvement into the, into the mix. And I think that'll benefit the committee as it advises, you know, advises the department.
Okay, other comments?
So I think it's interesting, as I'm looking at the Youth Commission page on our website, there's a lot of use of the word "youth," and yet there's a direct tie-in to Youth and Family Services and families, I think, are, in my mind, broadly defined in age and composition and what have you. And I think Ms. Schuman made a great point. And so for whomever is appointed, I would, I would ask the commission to think about how is the commission working with other departments in, or other committees, like the Council on Aging, to meet the needs of all of our community? And who's, where does that responsibility lie? Because I think that it can be a little bit cloudy, and I think there's opportunity there. So I think that while this is very kind of youth-focused, and I'm certainly not intending in my comments to downplay the need for supporting our youth and their mental health and wellness, I do think that it's important that we continue to stay focused on the mission, but while understanding that this commission, at least as I understand it, is intended to meet the broad needs of the community as a whole, regardless of age. And, and I think that that's an opportunity for, again, the commission and the Council on Aging to work collaboratively in that regard, and probably other departments, but I won't name them.
Great point. Any other comments?
No, I would just add to what you just said. You'd mentioned the departments, but I know they, they long have worked closely with the schools, with the police department and others. I know it came out in Mr. Kinderbone's, my apologies if I pronounce your name incorrectly, but in his work in the past with kind of the intervention in youth programs and that, which I think is a great thing that we've done through our Youth Commission and really working closely with schools and especially the police in that space to really help individuals. So again, this is tough. I, this is, I, I really like all four. But we have to choose two, so.
Yeah, I think as Sean said earlier, we can't pick a back decision here tonight. So, you know, I, just to kind of bolster my, my motion, you know, I, I found, again, Bethida's years of experience in the community, being involved, being a participant, active participant in the Youth Commission, while not even being a voting member since she's retired, it shows her passion and willingness to continue to give back to the community and specifically to our youth in the community. I also think it's really important that we have a variety, not to speak of age, but it's, it's important to have a variety of perspectives. And I think it's important to have that veteran look that you can bring into the Youth Commission. I think is important. So that's why I feel comfortable with, with my motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. For all those who support Bethida's nomination or motion? All those in favor? One to four? Oh, yeah, that's right. And all those against? Okay. Further discussion?
I'd like to make motions. And in doing this, before I make my motion, just a, a quick comment to Mr. Weiner. I very much appreciate your work as an associate member of the commission, and I hope that continues. The structure of the commission has a defined split between adults and students for a reason. I can see at times stepping away from that mix. But given the transition of the department at this point in time, I think it's important that we fill these two seats with adults with experience on the clinical side and now the community involvement, who are able to create some of those bridges and provide some of that professional expertise into the advice. And so my motion's nothing in detriment to your candidacy, and I hope you continue your work with the commission and your other interests, particularly in politics and in civic service. So thank you for that. With that, I would move to appoint Richard Contrabone to the Youth Commission Adult Member for a term to expire June 30th, 2026, and move to appoint Shaquan Reed to the Youth Commission Adult Member for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? So a question, my understanding is we have associate members on the Youth Commission for the students, and that this is a voting position on the commission. And Mr. Weiner, you're 18, so you're eligible for, for the position. Right, just want to confirm, you're not, okay, yeah, okay.
He's a senior.
He's a senior, I just want to make sure. So, so I think it's very important to have a voting member from this, from that age group on that commission for many reasons. Because it is a commission built to support them above and beyond the associate members, which are not voting members.
We have four voting members.
They are voting.
I thought, I thought, the associates are voting members? That's what I was asking.
There's four youth voting members, five adult voting members.
And then there are additional student members who are associate members.
Oh, okay, all right. That's what I wanted to understand. That's, that's what I wanted to understand. So thank you. Okay. Any other discussion?
Now, I would just echo, Ellen, I appreciate your comments. I, I think, given where we're at with the work of Youth and Family Services, and I won't repeat what you said, I, I think that the experience on the clinical side and all things well beyond my experience and my profession are important to the commission at this time. So for that reason, I'll be supporting your motion.
So you had a motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And all those against? And I'll revote that as a, as a support of the board. All those in favor? And all those against? Thank you again for your willingness to participate with the Youth Commission. And again, I'll just echo what's already been said a number of times, and that is that we hope to see you all continue to be involved in various different ways in the community. So thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on. Special Town Meeting warrant discussion?
Yep, so you have on your desk, and there's actually additional copies available up here next to the agendas, if folks want to grab one. It's version five of the annual town meeting, or sorry, the special town meeting warrants. And so our DPW director is here to present the Public Works articles to begin here.
So, real quick question, and there's a new article, New Article Five, so are those aren't, is that not reflected?
There's not a new Article Five, that's one of the bullets of the agenda item. So Chris is here to speak about his articles, and then I did not put it on because we hadn't had the discussion. So it's in your packet as a proposal, but it's not.
Okay.
It wouldn't be on this version.
Okay, and Christie, what we have here is from AFC, is that correct?
Yep, so the AFC has taken several votes, so I did put on the desk what their votes are that was sent to me today by the chair.
Oh, okay. You're not allowed, you're not allowed to.
Welcome, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. So, four articles to talk about from the Department of Public Works. If you read the article information, I think they're relatively straightforward. I do have some slides, but they're really just restating what's in the article information. So the first one is Article Three, which has to do with the adjustment to our water budget, and that adjustment, as it says, is due to electricity that we anticipate to be higher than what we've budgeted. And as you may know, our water and sewer operations manager has departed. It's probably going to be a lengthy process to hire someone new, and in the meantime, we have to still fill that position with a licensed water operator so we can provide services to the community. That service will probably be, well, is being provided now through a contract, and I suspect that'll continue for a little while. So we've asked for some additional money to fund that. So the total is $145,000, with $95,000 towards electricity and $50,000 towards the contract operations support. I assume you just ask questions as we go, or do you want to?
Yeah. Moving on.
Well, I would just make the point that a lot of times we try and do things like this with transfers and stuff, but the water budget is independent of the town budget, right? There is no other sum of money that we can transfer from here. That's why we need to do this, is its own separate, it's coming from an enterprise fund.
Correct.
Correct.
Chris, have we started the process to hire that person?
Yes.
Where we're at, okay.
Well, looking for, looking for a person, yes.
Yep, okay, thank you. And just for clarification, the contract operator obviously would hold the necessary licenses, and that person assumes all the same responsibilities as an employed person would have. And I'm going a little off topic here, but the contracted position, I know they're not an employee, but they hold all the same responsibilities, is that correct?
Specific to water.
Water.
So the position, the town position is for water and sewer?
Yep.
We would be hiring someone, and we have someone now who's contracted specifically for water-related issues. And that's, again, related to the licensing required.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, next one has to do with a generator that is no longer working, that needs to be replaced. It serves as an emergency backup at one of our sewer stations. This is a picture of it, so the top left just shows... This is, this is the generator here, this is the control panel, and the controls that connect to the generator, there's one, the pump that's over here to the left, this is the inside of this structure, this is the generator that's inside that structure, and then these are the control panels here. Typically, well, actually, I'm sure all of you remember, because you've been doing this for a while, we were funding generators out of, through the capital process, then we transitioned that to our budget, and we've been purchasing replacement generators through our budget, and we still do that. This generator is significantly higher in cost than what we typically fund, so our range is typically 20 to maybe $35,000 for a replacement generator. This one is 95. That's because all of this goes away, this generator in this box with a brand-new generator installed, and that's kind of what we typically do, but there's other steps that have to happen to get this generator installed. There's a really expensive crane that has to be hired to get it to the location where it needs to go, and all of this in here, this is a meter that has to be removed, this is a transfer switch that has to be adjusted, it's moved to the other side, we need a concrete pad to extend the pad that it's sitting on, so there's a number of other complications that make this an expensive replacement, which is not affordable out of our budget. And we've already purchased or have on order to replace the generator we had intended to purchase this fiscal year. This is an unexpected, you know, fault to the generator that we, it's an old generator, we knew we were going to replace it at some point, but not as soon as we are. And so the lead time for the generator is 22 weeks, I think it states that in the warrant, and so typically we would come to the annual town meeting to do this sort of purchase, but it's an emergency backup. I don't think we should wait till March and then wait another six months to get it, you know, to receive it. We should order it now and get it as soon as we can. So that's, that's what this article is.
Questions?
So the additional expense, Chris, is it mostly because of logistics as opposed to the generator itself? I don't need a cost breakdown, just high level.
Yeah, so the generator, I actually forget the cost, I have it in here somewhere, I could look it up, but it's in the, I think, 45 range, and then the rest is associated with the equipment necessary to replace, the labor to do all this control panel work, some, the concrete pad and some other things that are associated.
Okay, and?
And the disposal of all that stuff, because typically we have to dispose of the generator ourselves, but that's all kind of part of the package.
Okay, and is the additional cost as a result of the location of this particular generator and what you need versus like a lower cost, like if it, because the regular one, you said, is it more than 45,000?
No, it's, the cost of the generator is driven by the size, and so the amount of electricity, or, you know, the...
Power.
Of course, the power we need to run the pumps.
Thank you.
But, I mean, just to, if I can, just to follow on that, so this, so this one is unique, it sounds like, compared, for a number of reasons, but unique compared to what the other...
Yes.
Ones that you've replaced are?
Yes.
Okay.
And Chris, I don't know if you could talk to us a little bit about like the maintenance, is there a maintenance plan for these generators, and will this new generator be on a maintenance plan? How do we kind of?
Yep, so this one is from 1994, so it's, you know, over 30 years old, well over, are, well, 30 years old, I guess. 1990s technology, so it's old, so it needs to be replaced anyways, it's just we're doing it a little sooner than anticipated. In terms of maintenance, yes, we have a service contract that services all of our, all of our generators on a routine basis, and we do all of the, you know, prevent, we have an electrician, town electrician that I think many of you are already familiar with, who does all of that preventive maintenance associated with these generators. So, yeah, it just gets folded into our existing maintenance routine.
And just curiosity, what is, I'm assuming, like, I have a generator at home, right, and it tells me how many run hours I have on it, I'm just curious, is this, is there a threshold at which, hey, this had 1,000 hours or 20,000 hours of runtime on it, which is like, that's the threshold, now we gotta go replace it?
Well, the reason we're replacing it is it's not working.
Oh, okay, it's not working.
It doesn't work at all.
Okay.
I don't know the hours.
Sorry, I didn't hear that, so I apologize if you said that earlier.
Yeah, that's why we're replacing it. It's no longer functional, so we need to get something there as soon as we can.
All right, that makes sense.
Something that's permanent. I mean, we do have, just so everybody's clear, we have a generator, that's a mobile generator that we can bring there temporarily if something happens now, but that's not the long-term solution.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
This one is related to culverts that we've talked about many, many times. This is just a snapshot, just to reorient you to what we're talking about. This is, so downtown is up here, this is the reservoir down here, and we have Jackshaw Brook that's running from here to here, and we've had several town meeting articles over the past several years about both of these culverts, and this one, the one we're talking about tonight is this one here, Bowman Lane. So it is out for bid right now, we're waiting on our bids to be received. The funding for this culvert was received in, at annual town meeting in 2023, so it's been a little while since we received the funding, and we're not sure if we're going to get the right bid that's going to fall within the amount of money we received, so we want to be ready to come forward with a request for supplemental money to be able to fund that contract if that contract comes in higher than what we have appropriated right now. So on October 15th-ish, we'll get the contract, we'll make the decision, and if it's within the budget we already have, then this will go away, but if it's not, then we'll become in the town meeting to ask for the additional funding to pay for that contract.
So, can I ask, just for clarification, how do we know, there's an actual dollar amount, oh, no, so what we, we authorized in 2023 was $1,085,000? Is that correct?
That's correct. What was budgeted for this culvert was 950.
Okay.
Because that funding actually had money for the other culvert that's listed here, this Upton-Morse culvert.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So whatever the delta is, if there is one, that's what we would be asking for.
So, so I guess with the bid that's out, do you expect the delta to be between the 950 and the 1.1 point, the 1,085, or we don't know?
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. Okay, okay, so.
So, if I understand, this article doesn't have the dollar amount in it, would be?
Right, because we'll know once we get the bids on October 15th, and then we'll know how much it's going to cost.
If we need to have that motion come on.
We would add, yes, we would bring that.
Okay.
Yes.
That funding gap.
Finance committee has said they're going to wait to vote on it, too, because we don't know.
The vote at town meeting in 2023 was for the 1085.
Right, yeah, no, I just was trying to understand.
Because it was 950 for one culvert, the balance for the second one.
Yep.
We need additional funds for that $950,000 culvert. Stay tuned.
But it could be in excess of 950,000, that's what Chris is...
We might need incremental money above it.
Because we have 150,000.
The bidders are listening, hopefully we don't.
I was confused, too. Thanks for asking.
So in case the bidders are watching, I'll also be withholding my vote until we get their bids in.
Any other questions?
This last one, Article 15, is a bylaw update, so Article 54 is an existing stormwater bylaw. This is to update that bylaw. There's a lot of verbiage here that's in the warrant that explains why, the, kind of the key points. This isn't, this is an update that aligns our bylaw with current regulations and guidance through our stormwater permit. There's no significant changes to how we operate, it's just getting our bylaw to update it. So it's current with 2024 versus 2008. We're part of a stormwater coalition, it's about 30 different towns that pool resources, and one of the things that we benefited from, from that coalition, was they reviewed all the town members' bylaws, particular to this, this topic, and then they provided feedback that said, you know, here's how you are in relationship to the requirements that are in our stormwater permit. And so they identified those, and that's what drove us to then proceed to update the bylaw. The bylaw will update, so it does these things, it clarifies the authority and administration, it identifies you as the approver of regulations, it takes, if you've looked at the existing bylaw, it's very technical, it's more of a regulation-type document. We've removed those things, which was a recommendation, and those would go into our regulations. And the key point of this bylaw is the couple pages in the middle that talks about enforcement, because our current bylaw lacks some of the language that's necessary to make sure we can enforce, you know, what we need to do for stormwater compliance. So that's, that's what we're trying to do with this bylaw.
Questions, comments? Lot of information here.
It reads well.
If that's your thing.
Well, it sort of is.
But basically, to the piece here, it's replacing it in its entirety, deleting the old one, so really, a lot of times we'll see the line-outs of things changing, in this case, everything, it's just replacing the existing one, so in order for folks to understand the differences, it's really looking at the existing one versus this one.
Correct.
I'm comfortable with the shift. I did go back and look at the bylaw. It was, to say it was technical is somewhat of an understatement, but to have the bylaw really be policy and move all of the technical issues into the regulation, where, you know, it's not necessary, you know, to go to town meeting to...
Right.
To deal with that level of detail, but it is here at the policy level.
And to add the enforcement.
And to add the enforcement, which is important.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions on Article 15? Chris, before you go, I just want to circle back real quick to Article Six. The reason why I asked my question about the generator was because in the article information, it's just a little unclear to me. In the middle of it, it says, "If the generator fails," which led me to believe that this was an active, current, working generator. I realize your comments.
Yep.
So I don't know if that's something, the article information, we, I believe, as a board, are only borrowing on the article information, it's actually the articles themselves, so I think that that can be amended, that can't be...
No, not once you close the warrant.
Okay, so I would just be prepared for that, because it just makes you, might make one believe that that is a functioning generator.
Couldn't it change now?
We can change it now, right?
Change it now.
We can change it now, yeah, and that's what I would...
What would you propose?
We need to put language in there that just states that it's already failed. So this generator's already failed, which would, which would result in a power outage, something to that effect.
So this is not a, this is currently not a working generator, we're using a backup generator to service, to replace this, is that a correct statement, Chris?
I think, I think we just delete that sentence, and then add a sentence that says the generator is currently not operational.
No longer.
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor?
Probably change. Probably change.
Yeah, change.
Change, yes.
So I think, and I, I'd suggest it just after the first sentence.
After the first sentence, what?
The generator is no longer operational.
Or do we just change that sentence, and just, that first sentence? And just say that this request seeks to replace the 1994 backup power generator and control panels for the old Flanders Pump Station, which is no longer operational?
Sure.
Simple.
Yep. So moved.
So it's right there in the first.
Second. The motion, second in. All those in favor? Quicker and easier. There you go.
Does that work, Christie?
Nice words, Smith.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Discussion on Article 8?
Well, actually, I just wanted to move through the warrant. So we, we added, we added a number. If you go to Article 2, we added the number for the landfill expenses. So changing, transferring from landfill expenses, $48,250, to landfill salary and wages. And that would fund the two 19-hour-week positions to do the Waste Management Program Coordinator position through the end of the fiscal year, as well as add effective shortly following the October town meeting, an eight-hour position. And the purpose of that additional position is to round out the hours. Currently, we have Board of Health staff that's trying to cover the hours when we don't have folks there.
Christie, just as a suggestion on that, there could be some questions as to how that actually breaks out, the 19 plus the two. Just at town meeting, we might wanna present that more specifically.
Yeah, we wouldn't put it in the article.
No, not in the article, right, right. While we're talking about it.
Actually, you skipped over, maybe you said Article, but as of right now, still there's nothing.
There's no prior year bills.
Okay.
Chris just did Article 3. Article 4, we've added numbers as well. So it's $153,000, $153,000 that would transfer from available funds. And then also a reason appropriate for fiscal '25 to adjust the fire department salary and wages, an increase of $175,000. And fire department expenses for an increase of $9,600 to fund the second year of the contract, which is the current fiscal year. So those are the numbers that have been included. And just one of the points I made with the Finance Committee last night is that it's, it was all calculated based on current staffing. So, you know, obviously, we've had changeover since the beginning of that contract, and so it is current staffing.
It just, so the transfer from available funds, the motion will say what, where we're transferring it from? Is that how it works?
Yep. The cart path, Jen came and talked to you all about that. Chris just did Article 6 with you, and 7. For the community center project, for Article 8, this is, we've added the number here. So following the discussion about funding-only design, this would fund at $1,120,713. This is a $5,000 increase from a previous version of the warrant. And that's really, that's for survey work and talking to the design team. There was a need for survey work to be done. So their suggestion was to increase it by that $5,000. At this point, still, still expecting to use the Del Webb Chauncey Mitigation Stabilization Fund, still having that conversation with town council. But it seems that that's, that will be the way that we would go. That fund, again, is for the support of seniors through capital projects and programming, and also affordable housing. Next week, at your meeting, the design team will be here to show you the updated preferred option. We did get a sneak peek of that today. And, you know, I do think it's very responsive to a lot of the things that we've seen, specifically around that second staircase and elevator. So we'll get that out to you all to look at as soon as we can, and then he'll present it. And also, we'll present what exactly this 1.1 million would cover. But essentially, it would get us to a phased approach to bid documents, and then also some further development of those white spaces that have been previously shown. He'll show you that as well.
Shelby, you got a question?
Yeah, so Christie, just, it would be helpful for the, for our next meeting to understand the need for surveying work. I guess.
It's for utilities.
It's for utilities.
Okay, so I still would like to understand that, because I can already imagine the public saying, why are we paying for surveying work when we just purchased this? And we, you know, that's part of, there was, I mean, I remember we looked at utility lines and all of that. So I wanna understand what exactly they're proposing, even if it's just $5,000 that is part of this design work. I'm not saying it's not necessary, just need more information.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yep. Are you ready to move on?
Yeah, we're gonna get more information.
Okay.
Next week.
Okay, yep. The golf club building project, this is, this is, would be a borrow through, $450,000 through the Country Club Enterprise Fund. One of the things that we talked about at the Municipal Building Committee was the continued interest to fund this project fully through, or not, I used to say, not on taxes. So in having many conversations with town council and different finance folks, there's agreement that this can be fully funded through the Country Club Enterprise Fund or the Golf Club Enterprise Fund. That being said, there needs to be the level of revenue to cover the costs that we would incur through debt. So, so this, so right currently, the revenue that we receive through the Golf Club Enterprise Fund is specifically through the golf course. And that yields a little under $100,000 in excess revenue, which goes into our retained earnings. So we have about $600,000 in retained earnings currently for the golf club. So ultimately, because that funds other capital needs of the entire course, it's not a clear funding source for this project, meaning that we would need to identify new revenue sources to fund the debt service on a future project. So we can absorb this $450,000, but any, the larger building would need to be, would need to be covered by a new revenue source. So that might, so that would likely be the lease payment on the restaurant. And so part of this $450,000 would actually engage a food service consultant to work through what we could expect for a lease payment, in looking at sort of how the kitchen is laid out or what it offers to a restaurateur, you know, how that might impact a future lease payment. And then talking through what level of fit-up the town would do before a restaurateur came in. So, you know, is it a shell? What sort of opportunities they would have? So I think the Municipal Building Committee understands that there's a need to make, identify those things, and then design towards that identified budget.
Can I just add? Just a comment, as a liaison or the member from the board on that, not liaison, a member from the board on that committee. You know, the architects were very clear, and this was suggestion to us, and we agreed of bringing on this kind of restaurant consultant as part of this process. Because they've put in, and we've seen in the designs, of like table configuration, seating, all that stuff. But they readily admit that they are not experts in this. And part of what this will do is, again, is the kitchen the right place? Is it the right size? Is, you know, how does, you know, the setup and what can we fit? What do you wanna fit to make, again, payments work? And the hope, of course, is we wanna get it right. And if we can get it smaller, it comes in cheaper. And that's one of the things I suggested. So right now, it's built out, but really not with the expertise, specifically on how you would design interior restaurant, how you'd get seats in there, whatever. That would be a big piece out of this, so we can understand, and hopefully further refine, and in my view, reduce those costs, which especially would come if we were able to shrink the size of the building. Because that's where the big cost comes in from a building standpoint.
So this would fund, in addition to the restaurant consultant, it would fund future, it's a similar approach to what we talked about with the community center. It would fund an OPM, and then also architects, as well as the.
To really get us to full pricing bid documents.
To biddable documents.
Correct.
So Christie, you mentioned this would be a borrow. And then you mentioned it would be absorbed. So I'm just, so.
Paid for out of the enterprise.
Paid for out of the enterprise fund. The debt service would be paid out of the enterprise.
Debt service would be paid out of the enterprise, okay, all right.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. The $450,000 is sitting in golf club retained earnings?
There's about $600,000, but we're not proposing to use that for this, because we don't want it to fully deplete the retained earnings. So it would be a borrow under the enterprise fund, similar to borrows that we do in the water sewer. And so the debt service, even though it would be a general obligation bond, it would be paid for through the enterprise fund.
And it would be a short-term, short-term?
Yeah, so we would use a state house note. Another thing that we talked about last night that I'll just bring up is our ability to use tax-exempt bonds versus non-tax-exempt bonds, because it is a private use that we're proposing. So currently, this borrow would likely be a non-tax-exempt bond. But even running it at a high interest rate, in terms of estimates, we felt that we could absorb it in the current enterprise fund.
Okay. All right, so I think just a general comment, and that's, I think, good to know. So, so the estimates that came in, came in between like $7 and $8 million, right? For the, for the full project, currently?
But just, I know you're not done, I don't wanna interrupt you, but the.
But you just did.
But I did. So different from the community center project, that the scope of that work is with schematic design and cost estimates, the golf club, or the Municipal Building Committee, did a feasibility study. So they've, they're, they're much more conceptual in design, is what I should. I don't think it's gonna go from $8 million to $2 million. But it's a little bit, it's not as, I guess, refined as maybe the community center, just given the scope of work of those two different projects to date.
Okay.
But that's what we wanna get to with this funding, would allow us to get to basically.
Get to biddable documents and go through the value engineering process.
Correct.
Which is okay, we have our design. What minor modifications can live with the spirit, but reduce the cost.
Both of the projects will basically land in the same place.
I was speaking before. So, so let's say we get it down to $6 million. So we get it down to $6 million. So that's a 20-year note. So that's $300,000 a year. Plus, now, if it's a not, if it's not a tax-exempt bond, I'm assuming then we're paying like 4.5% to 5%. Let's say it's at least 4%. So 4% at $6 million, and that first year is $240K. So that's, the first year is $540,000. So the golf course operating committee assumes a portion of that. And then our hope is that the lease payments would cover the rest. So let's say, so what I say, let's round it down to $500,000. So it's $500,000 for the first year. The golf course pays $100,000, because that's what the profit is currently. Then we're looking for, to own a restaurant that's gonna need to make like $35K a month in lease payments, and sort of what's the expectation of that restaurant owner of the town when they're paying $35K a month to run that restaurant?
So just, the lease payment of the restaurant would go into the enterprise fund. So it would be a revenue of the enterprise fund. And so everything you're saying is right. But I'm just, I just technically, so before the lease payment for the Civic went into the general fund, but now all of the, all of the revenue received from the restaurant. So if we do a lease payment, if we have some sort of revenue sharing, if we put some sort of room rental fee, all of that revenue goes into the enterprise fund. I don't, I'm not saying it's gonna equal that. That's, that's why we need this restaurant consultant to help us understand how that would work. Because I think maybe what you're getting at is that if we have a debt service payment that they can't, that the enterprise fund can't cover, then it would fall to the general fund.
Okay, and then there's something else here that maybe I wasn't understanding. So, so thank you for that. Because it was, the golf course, like the clubhouse is owned, is 100% owned by the golf course. But if it's a restaurant, like that restaurant isn't 100% the obligation of the golf course operating committee, was my original understanding.
Right, no, but, right. And so that's how we had talked about it previously. But through those conversations, it actually would be fully under the enterprise fund. So, so they could still, you would still create that lease, the select board would still negotiate it. It's not different from how we've worked with other, with our other enterprise funds. It's just sort of the financial detail is that the revenue goes into the enterprise fund. The cost of the debt service is a cost of the enterprise fund.
Okay.
But I also wanna just go back to what you said about the tax exempt versus non-tax exempt. So this would be the only borrow at this point, which is why it would likely, this $450,000, which is why it would fall to a non-tax-exempt bond. What, if we were to move forward, say in March, and just say that the library project and this project gets approved, the percentage of the total bond, so the total borrow, would indicate whether or not this could be a tax-exempt bond. So, so say this was $2 million, and the library is, I don't know, I don't know how many millions. So many more millions is, you know, it would just depend on the percentage of this in the entire bond.
So the goal, the goal is to get it to be tax-exempt?
Because you can only, because you can do up to 10% of private use. But again, I don't think it changes what, the point that you're making.
There's also, there's also different scenarios with the borrow, because if I recall, our strategic fiscal management policies allow for the rollover of short-term debt, if that's advantageous from an interest rate for up to the 10-year limit before going out to the 20-year note. And so, sort of depending on where we are with short-term and long-term rates, the actual borrow could cover, it could be as short as 20 years, it could be as long as 30 years.
I mean, and I think.
To, you know, run that analysis as well.
And Sean, what I'd say is what you said, absolutely correct. And we had that preliminary conversation at Municipal Building Committee, and said, that's why we need to do this, because we have to do kind of cost management and understand. And what these consultants do as well is they'll say, yeah, that seems reasonable for what you're providing them, or no, there's no way you're gonna get someone to pay $38,000 a month for a lease payment. So what is it that would be reasonable? Then that will help us, again, value engineer and say, you know, what's the viable project that we can do that basically can be paid for the way we wanna pay for it, which is not out of tax dollars? So we have a ways to go. And personally, we have a ways to go from $7 to $8 million.
Christie, can you educate me a little bit on the private versus public use piece of it? You mentioned that if there's a certain percentage of the bond, 10%, private use, if we're below that threshold, then the entire bond would be at a better rate, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Yeah, it would be taxed.
So the public-private use piece, the, are we, so we're saying a portion of this project is gonna be private use, right? So.
The restaurant.
Right.
Not a municipal use.
Okay. I was thinking, well, right, and I was thinking about like the rooms. I thought we were like, you said charging for room, like if we were to, if we were to charge a fee for the rooms. That's what I was thinking, that was, is that for a public, a private function? And that's why it falls into it, but I guess the restaurant.
So we manage that, that's the extent on ours.
Right, right, okay.
Right, what I was saying, and I don't think it would yield that much in revenue, but as an option, you know, is there like a room rental fee? If there's a function, and the restaurant gets the food.
That's what I was thinking, the private use was, but the restaurant's part of it.
It's not gonna be $500,000.
But I wanna get back to something that Sean said, because followed, but not entirely. So you mentioned $35,000 in revenue a month to hit the goal, right? Not $35,000 as a, as a, as a lease payment? Is it one and the same? Is that what you're saying?
I, I, my thought was the lease payment was the revenue.
Okay.
Unless they're coming up with other sources of revenue, but that's my understanding.
So we would set the lease payment, thirty-five thousand dollars, let's say, and they would have to hit that target to pay their, their lease, and that would be the revenue to town.
We would go out to bid and somebody would have to agree to pay thirty-five thousand.
Right, regardless if they made it or not, right?
Yeah, but they wouldn't stay in business, but they wouldn't stay in business long if they.
If they did.
I mean, it would be a lease payment, but that, but, you know, in preliminary conversations of the municipal building committee, I think they were thinking closer to a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year.
Okay, so like ten, ten to twelve grand a month.
Right.
But again, we're not experts, so that's kind of what we need to.
And the number of seats and all those things, the size, the, yeah.
Size of conference room, signs about a function room, et cetera. Some of the things have all been in the design, came out of the original study that we had, the, the building use committee. All that's being incorporated, but now it's saying, you know, what is feasible, how are we going to do it? I mean, so there's still a lot of work to do there. Because Sean, you're spot on and it said it's the same discussion we had is we got to make the numbers work. And if you think at it right now, I don't know if they work or not, they don't seem to work, I mean, that, that level, so we have to figure that out.
But, I mean, and they're also, this would be not something that consultants would necessarily do, but our own work to understand our current greens fees and membership fees, so if you have, you know, a new clubhouse, does that change? You know, are we, are we, even if you have do nothing, you know, are we at, in the market, you know, where are our fees, where do our fees sit, so.
I would just make one other comment, so that there hasn't been a restaurant for this past year, and my understanding is membership is up at the golf course. Like not having a restaurant doesn't seem to be keeping people from using the golf course.
Yeah, correct. But I would say that in the past, the, the use of the restaurant by golf course members was extremely minimal, even prior when the restaurant was running.
It's more external use.
Correct, and that's what we, what came out of the survey and other stuff. Now that could, I mean, I think the hope was that we. Do you do the right thing, it would change some of the things we've looked at in the design is actually having concessions. We try, but right at the end of the last lease of, as, as we know as a board, because we amended the license to do liquor service, we could have beverage cart service at, on the golf course, like many golf courses do, so there's, those things all would have to be worked out as, again, part of a, a lease arrangement, but you know, again, this is through what came out of that and what came out of the survey, that this is not a, this is not a country club, this is not catering that building for golfers solely. It's really a, you know, mixed use, would love to see, and I think the old restaurant would have loved to see more golfers using it at the times when golfers use it to supplement it. And I think that would help in terms of lease payments if that would work, but I think that's all part of that discussion.
The other thing that came up at the finance committee last night is the possibility of a land lease. So there was discussion about, you know, public-private partnership and what that would look like and, and that really is what we're talking about, because we're talking about bringing in someone who would do the final fit-up of the building for the restaurant. But in terms of, you know, a land lease, that would really be where someone would come in. They would do all of the work, they would, they would build it, the, the town would have limits on how much they, we would have in it. And then we would sublet back the golf pro shop, so that, that came up, but I think one of the things that we've talked about is the location of that building and sort of the visibility of it in the neighborhood and, and making sure that it meets with the character and, you know, not having sort of control over what that looks like versus having control, so.
So I apologize if this was already spoken to, but the last time we had the presentation from the Architects Come, there were two designs, right, there was a, use the building and retrofit it essentially. And then build new. So is this, was there, has there, so this is, so this design will be a design work for both options?
No, I think, I think that what will happen out of the municipal building committee will be to make a choice of which way to go, but it has, it has not happened yet.
Based on this work. Based on this work that is going to be done, right, because how would you make a decision on that without like the input of the food consultant or what have you? So you still have both designs, you're going to narrow it down through this work.
Correct.
So it is so that, they are going to do the design work for both options?
I, I don't think that you wouldn't, you wouldn't anticipate both options coming forward, they'll just figure it out.
Analyze both options, I think, they're going to look at both options and then come up with a best solution. That's what we.
Well, they're going to provide a detailed cost estimate, so I guess my question is if you're designing, are you designing?
Yeah, it's a good question.
For option A or option B, or are you designing and providing a cost estimate for both options?
I would expect the restaurant consultant would provide guidance.
It's just one piece.
Right, but no, would provide guidance from a, from a building standpoint.
Yes, regardless of it's.
You look at the ways you can physically renovate the building, right, because you can only do so much with the structure. Is it viable for the restaurant in function space, or would you, to accomplish what you want financially for the restaurant, would you need to replace the building? I would expect that the consultant would say, you know, great location, restaurant will never, you can never get enough seating in, you can never make it efficient enough, you're going to need extra staff. Whatever with this layout. Or, or they'll say, hey, if you make these change, if you can make these changes to the building, this is a great space that a restaurant can generate the type of revenue that could support what you want it to support.
Yeah, so, so to your question.
So the consultant will input as to whether or not the current space renovated is workable, or you're better off starting from scratch.
Yeah, I think to your question, we're not asking to do two sets of bid documents for either one, it's going to be a decision made ahead of that to come with one set of bid documents for either.
They'll come back.
Renovation or a new building.
Okay, so that said, and that's very helpful, thank you, as I was, as I'm reading this again, it says, and create bid documents for building improvements, which implies to me that we're going to improve the existing building only. That doesn't speak to me as far as, you know, rip and replace.
You mean in the language itself?
The language itself, it's, that to me says, we are going, we are going to fix the current building. So I would suggest if you're going to do what you're saying, which makes sense to me, I think we need to reword that.
For building reuse? Or, or, I mean, right, that's a good catch.
I'm sorry, I didn't see this in earlier versions, I would, I would have brought it to your attention, it's just as we're talking through this.
So while, while you guys.
I would propose just changing that from building improvements to building improvements or replacement. Or redevelopment.
I mean, I think this has to go to legal counsel, I mean, this is, I'm assuming they drafted.
It's a borrow, so it's a bond, bond council wrote the article.
I think the question, well, the question to ask though is, I think it's a good point, the question is, does building improvements, is it broad enough to cover? Because we're improving the building that's in, now they're improving, it could be a tear down and rebuild or, and I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and that's the question I think needs to be asked, does that cover? Is that broad enough to cover what potentially could be happening?
Ben, I think that could change in the motion then.
Do we, do we, do we make a motion, or do we have to go back to bond council and leave this one as a separate item?
You can't, you have to close the warrant.
I'm saying you could, the, the motion could be slightly different, correct?
Could we, yeah, so your question is on town floor, can we, can we make a motion to change?
I mean, if you're concerned about what this says, then it's, I mean, I, I, I think it's, I think it's fine, if you wanted to, if you are concerned about the word improvements, then I will ask bond council for a different word.
Well, can I just, I think we've had some great discussion here, I've learned a lot, we've had, you know, we had the benefit of the presentation, theoretically, people watched it, I'm sure majority of people didn't, who are going to attend town meetings, so I think we're raising a number of questions and I don't expect an answer now, but we should really think about as the municipal building committee, I presume, is going to present this, like, what's going to be presented, because that's, think about kind of the questions we're asking here. And even that language, so, so even if it were, if that language remains, I'm comfortable with then the municipal building committee saying, and improvements means this or this.
Yep.
Right, so as, as just one example. I think we need to provide clarity around, like, what exactly we're getting for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a borrow, like what percent of that is the food consultant, what percent is bid docs, OPM, so.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, okay, and then is the presentation going to also include like presenting the current designs, or you're going to leave that out and say, we have two designs and we're going to narrow it to one, it's, it's, you don't have to tell me now, but because I can see, people like the visuals, but people are going to be like, what are we even voting on, they're not going to understand that, and that's my worry at this moment.
Yep. Yeah, I think it's going to be, again, I look at this as similar to the community center and how we're going to show it, because it's a similar ask for dollars and, you know. So more of this too is for more public input, because I think we need more public input as part of this process, that's a big piece that will be in here, but we haven't thought about it, so I don't want to speak on behalf of it, I, I do think you have to show something, because no matter how much we try, as we know, people don't watch all the stuff, all the people that show up town meeting are not going to know what we're even talking about.
Anyway, I think just clarity is going to be important, but I'm comfortable with, with building improvements, but I would encourage an explanation.
Well, then why don't we just make it say, building, construction and/or improvements?
Sure. Property improvements. So you want a motion to change it?
Well, when you close the warrant, you'll have to do it subject to the changes that you're making.
Okay.
I just, I mean, that question that you asked, I can answer, so four hundred thousand of it is, is based on an estimate for the, for architect.
Okay.
And that is inclusive of the food service consultant, because a food service consultant relationship with the architect, they're typically a subcontractor of the architect. And then the fifty thousand is for OPM, so because we have to go out to bid for both of those things, there, those are just estimated round numbers.
Okay, and, and so then in the four hundred, that also includes the bid documents?
For both, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Includes everything, yep.
Yeah, okay.
On the OPM piece, is that fifty K, is it only for that time period, or if this project moves forward?
Only for that.
It's only for that period, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly how it is with those community center too.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? Okay.
So I think we already talked about the community preservation budget, the transfer to affordable housing, I don't think there's anything else. I, I guess I'll point out that there's an update to Article fourteen, so it only has the one property for trail easement, I can't remember when, which version we changed that in. And Jenny's going to come and talk about that on October eighth, she, they had a hearing tonight, so she couldn't come tonight.
Christie, can I ask you a clarification on number ten? So I know we're discussing this earlier, but I didn't have a chance to ask you, so the, what is the total, or I think it might be helpful, what is the total amount of CPA funds that we collected that are going into reserves?
Three hundred and twenty-one thousand.
So that's total, okay, and so.
Well, this is, this is based on estimates for the current fiscal year, are you asking about fiscal twenty-four?
Let me, hold on.
This is only about fiscal twenty-five.
So don't we need action on fiscal twenty-four?
No, so, under the law, the first year that you have CPA funds, that, that's, can be an internal function with the finance department, so you don't need town meeting approval for that first year only.
Okay. And then just as a suggestion, I don't know who's liaising to, is, do you have a number on that?
No.
No, we don't, right? I think it would just be helpful to, to speak to that.
Which?
The FY, the FY twenty-four number, like what's already there and how has it been allocated into those three buckets? Right, so we, we collected some amount, right, in FY twenty-four under CPA?
So you want the CPC to present the balances?
Yeah, okay, thank you, sorry, I wasn't being articulate.
But you're not asking for that in the article information? I mean, I don't have it.
No, I, no, no, no.
Just to talk about it.
No, just to talk about it, right, so, yeah, I think just to talk about it, so then for FY twenty-five, the estimates would be that the total amount coming into the CPC would be three hundred and twenty-one thousand and change in.
No, four ninety-three.
No, four ninety-three.
Back in the comments down below.
Sorry.
Right, the total's four ninety-three, eight forty-seven.
And this is the allocation.
Point one oh, and then this is just FY twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
So the sum of all that stuff is.
Sorry, I thought you were just asking about the actual, for general reserve.
No, sorry, okay, so, sorry, I missed that, okay, so that's where the ten percent thing comes, so it's going to leave, where I was going is, I just think it's important, so it's required to, ten percent is required to be allocated to those three buckets, and then the balance is the three hundred and twenty-one thousand that could be allocated to any of those three buckets based on the CPC's discretion and a future town meeting vote.
Plus you have that administrative expense which comes out, yes, exactly.
Okay, okay, again, as familiar as I am, I think it's, this is brand new, it's going to require that.
But it's still good, I think where you're headed, I mean, you're absolutely right on that, but I think it's good to understand the entire fund, like where are we, I think it's, I think it's a good question to ask CPC, as a common, speak to the.
Well, they're presenting it, so they should be providing that, sorry.
You're asking them to come next week?
No, I'm saying the, the information should be provided at, at town.
Town meeting, okay.
Just be able to talk to them.
They should just be prepared.
It's a slide, that's.
I don't want them to be like, ah, we weren't prepared for FY twenty-four.
Right.
Okay, thank you for going back. Alright.
Because you just, so you're on Article fourteen, just a question as I read this, is this, the way the article's written, this does not sound like it's part of BWAL, or is it?
It's first sidewalk, isn't this, well. Yeah, it's, it's, I don't know, she took out BWAL, she's coming next week.
Yeah, based on my experience with this particular property and as it relates to the Hakamaka Committee, I believe this is trail.
Is trail behind.
I agree with you.
So if you're, if you're standing at the building at a Hakamaka and you're looking down onto the water, it's like on the other side of the pond, that easement, I believe that's what this is.
Right, existing trail and then sidewalk.
So that is or is not part of the BWAL?
That is not.
I don't believe it is.
No, it's not, that's why I wanted to.
And that's been, we've been working on this easement for.
Yep.
A long time. I dare say two years. But thank you for asking, and I know we had some folks that were here.
That's why I wanted to.
Well, it did previously was titled BWAL, because it had additional parcels, but it turns out the additional parcels that were listed, it was identified that they were actually already authorized at previous town meetings. And then I think the zoning and then the, the bylaw that Chris spoke about, and then it gets us to the TIF article. As you can see, the, I mean, the boards already had this discussion, and then the finance committee voted unanimously to support it last night, so I know that Lester has offered to come and do a presentation next week, if, if you're interested.
Any interest?
Huh?
Is there any interest to?
Well, I mean, I think we've talked about, I guess the only question to ask the board is, do they think it would be beneficial for the community to hear it at our meeting prior to town meeting?
I don't think it would hurt.
That's what I'm thinking, it might not hurt.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Yeah, it's an out there, you can point people to it.
Exactly, they can watch it and say, hey, we did present it.
Here's the timestamp.
And then also in your packet, you have another proposed warrant article. I had put it, I put it as proposed article fi, new article five, I think it would be article six, but ultimately, it's a, it's a request to fund a compensation study for non-union employees, so there, I had provided you with article information, but essentially back in two thousand seventeen, we did a class. we did a class in comp study. And while we continue to review positions using the, the tools and that they had provided for.
8378.
For classification. We do need to update our compensation study because the last time that we've updated non-union salaries was in 2018. Obviously, the market has changed pretty significantly since then. The reason we say non-union is because we do look at the market for all of our union contracts when we, when we negotiate them. That's also true for individual contracts that the town has, but, but we really want to look at our non-union salaries. It's really important, I think, for recruitment, retention, making sure that we're, we're within the market and we can keep folks. So Kim has done some work going out to get quotes, and so I can let her speak more to what that, it would entail.
We specifically sought quotes for strictly looking at the compensation schedule. This is not a full-blown reviewing job descriptions, amending the classification plan. Well, there may be a few positions as a result of doing the compensation study that may be suggested for reclassification. This is really doing, looking at the market, looking at wages and, well, identifying appropriate comp communities, looking at wages and other aspects of compensation. So the, the total, the lowest quote that we have is $9,000 and the timeframe is probably a three to four month turnaround once we're able to engage the consultant.
Questions? I would say I'm supportive of this. I mean, we do look at comparables with each turn of the union contracts. It's been seven years since we've looked for non-union staff. I actually think we, we owe it to them to do a market study. It's important, you know, we're always sensitive to budget and a lot of our budget's people. It's also important that they're fairly compensated and, and of course, it's always more expensive to find someone new than it is to have folks stay and maintain that expertise and that longevity.
If I may, one piece I didn't mention, we have, in pulling together the list, it's about 40 position titles that would be evaluated.
If I could, I would just add to what Alan said too, and knowing what we've talked about a lot, both in union and non-union positions, municipal hiring is difficult. We want to make sure that where we keep who we have, that we're, we're staying competitive. And I think for the cost of that to see, to ensure that we are competitive because we want to keep our employees, but for those that leave, we want to know when we're hiring that we can be, we're hiring at the right levels. And it's, we know it's difficult now to find folks, qualified folks to come into these positions, so I support it. Alan said as well, I think it's important for us to do for the existing employees, but also as we think about future new employees or replacement employees.
Yeah, so echoing the thoughts already stated, I won't repeat those. I, I think, when, I know that this is just looking at compensation, I guess I'm wondering as we look at our studies, and I hesitate to suggest this, but we did our strategic plan in 2018, we did this in 2017. I think a lot of the changes that we've made with our staffing and organizationally have, you know, we've been working that plan. I know there's still items on the strategic plan we haven't actually yet implemented or working toward that. I think this is sort of a bargain at $9,000, so I want to support this because of the comments that were made, but I'm wondering if maybe for future conversation, we need to be thinking about that bigger picture. And it's, to me, it's not just about updating potentially salaries, but it's also about organizationally, you know, do we have the right structure?
So you're not talking about our strategic plan, you're talking about our staffing study?
Well, I'm talking about both and how they tie in together.
Okay, because the strategic plan, I think we've identified that we've accomplished those goals, but the staffing study.
Staffing study, yeah, I'm sorry, Kristy, you were.
No, it's okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood. So I, I do think, you know, to your point, every time we have a vacancy, we do evaluate based on the staffing study and, and, you know, maybe it's time for an update to the board to, to acknowledge all of the things that we have implemented, so.
Well, and we, you know, we've seen a lot of changes. We talked about youth and family services, we have, we have some retirements coming up, and we've seen changes in DBW, I mean, what have you. So anyway, I just put that out there, I'm supportive of this for the reasons stated, but I don't want to lose sight of the bigger picture.
I'm supportive as well, I just want to, I just had a question. Realize comprehensive review of compensation, and I just want to make sure, will this also include review of like other compensation, you know, other, you know, when we compare it to other communities and whatnot, you know, not just monetary, but like other benefits that we provide as a town?
Well, but not insurance or anything like that, right? I know that they were going to look at, you know, longevity pay, other stipends that non-union employees might get, so it's not the full sort of benefit package, if that's, if that's.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was like more inclusive of the whole benefit package, or at least portions of it.
So it wouldn't look at retirement or insurance?
Yeah.
But I think other things that we, we may or may not currently have.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? So Article Five.
Article Six.
So I would make it Article, so my proposal would be to make it Articles, the new Article Six.
Article Six.
And so you could close the warrant subject to your amendment to Article Six, Article Nine, and the inclusion of the compensation study article as presented as the new Article Six, or something like that.
So moved.
Second, well, first we have to place the items on the warrant. Uh, isn't this part of placing?
That's placing it, that's.
That's Ian's motion.
My motion is to place it on the warrant as.
As presented.
Yes.
Okay. So second. Your second, okay. Any further discussion?
Can I just ask, what do we, do we know of him, what we paid for? I know it was more comprehensive in 2017. What was the cost of that?
I believe it was 20,000.
That will come up. I know it was more comprehensive.
I kind of had it in there, did I not? I know I may have, I know I, we had looked at that because we were curious as well, so.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, is this a roll call for this or just a regular handout? Okay, so all those in favor?
I'll move to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second?
Subject to the changes.
Subject to the changes we made, just because we placed them, yep.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? And now we'll go through the actual warrant items themselves. So. Sorry? I didn't get it either.
Debbie's here to watch you sign though.
So should we do that before we vote?
So it's going to sign the last page because you're going to make those adjustments, right?
You don't want my highly mocked up version, you want a, a copy. Okay?
Thank you for waiting. No, it wasn't.
Tell the truth.
Yes, yes.
We have multiple.
It didn't go through?
Carbon copies. Still remember that smell.
Yeah, rolls of it. I remember my mom had one, her grading system was so cool.
Oh. I wonder if you could find one like on eBay or something? They still sell them. Do they really?
So Patrick, are we going to go through and do the, any questions?
Well, that's what I was, I wanted to, refresh me on the process again, it's been a year.
I think so.
Actually, it's been nine months, so. So we need to go through and, you know, are there any particular articles that people have questions?
Call out.
Call it out, right? So.
Well, not questions, because we're not going to, well, we've got some other people.
Is there any, any articles people want to have a discussion about?
Yeah, whether or not we support or that we want to hold our vote.
Right.
For additional information.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll just go through, top to bottom, Article One.
Hold.
Sorry?
Hold it, because we don't have.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing to support right now in Article One.
Right, okay.
It may be something that we just pass over, so.
Right, right. Article Two. Article Three. Article Four, I should call these out, fire department contract. Article Five, FY 2025 cart path repair.
Is that no longer Article Five?
No, it's still Article.
Still Article Five. Then the new Article Six.
The new Article Six.
Non-union compensation study?
No, but.
Anybody have any questions on Article Six, the non-union compensation study or discussion? Articles, future Article Seven, sewer water, sewer infrastructure replacement. Article Eight, stormwater system improvements.
So I guess we hold on that because we don't know an amount?
Yep.
Keep me honest here. Article Nine, community center project.
I think we had questions about.
I think we hold to get the presentation.
Yeah.
For the presentation?
Yeah.
Article Nine, Article Ten, golf club building project? Hold on that one.
We're not getting more and more information, so I take that back.
We already had everything presented?
I mean, we're, we're not, when do you guys meet again, Ian?
October 17.
Yeah, the week before town meeting.
But we own as a board before, between then?
Although we could vote before you could give us an update.
Before town meeting, yeah. So I could, we can take back, I can take back, come up comments tonight.
Okay. We could vote this pre-meeting, right, at Monday night before town meeting opens.
I know, but.
Let me see if I can get, let me see if I can get information back. I'll talk to Kristy and see, and Al at the chair to see if there's something, well, I guess the question is, is it something we want to put on our meeting for next week?
I guess I would rephrase my initial comment that, I mean, my feedback was more like, what does the public need to be aware of? So not us as necessarily as a board, I mean, some clarity would be helpful, but it won't change my support for this at this point. And I think it's important that our votes make it into the, the book, if it can. So if we're, if we're ready to.
No hold?
I would say, I'm not holding, so if someone else feels that.
Anybody feel I need to hold?
I wrote it twice and crossed it out, but no.
And I think you're right, we vote tonight on it and then if something spectacular happens on the 17th, we re-vote.
Yeah, at town meeting.
And we can update that vote at town meeting, like, you know, with, publicly, so, okay, so no hold on 10. Article 11, community preservation program budget. Article 11, transfer to affordable housing trust fund.
Which is 12.
Which is 12, excuse me. Article 13, acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, subsection 54B, municipal prudent investor standard. Article 13, contract term, information technology. Article, Article 15, trail easement.
This is.
Did we want clarification on the location before we voted support?
I, I did ask Jenny to come next week.
Next week. So we hold off on that one just?
Hold up.
Yep.
Article 16, amended general bylaws, Article 54, stormwater management bylaw. Got a whole bunch of pages here.
I'm just looking, I don't know if other folks are just looking at the votes that came from finance committee and their comments. That was one that they had a, two opposed.
So Kristy, can you clarify, minority want to preserve less than 5,000 square feet disturbance?
I don't know, I wasn't there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, I just wasn't there for that one.
Watched the recording.
Did you?
I did, I did a quick look, I think that's something that moves the regulation.
Something that moves the regulation?
Remember, they pulled stuff out of the bylaw that will go in the regulations.
Oh, okay.
Rather than the bylaw.
So therefore it doesn't affect what we're voting, which is the bylaw, not the regulation?
So all good with Article 16, no hold. Article 17, amended zoning bylaw, inclusionary zoning. Article. Article 18, amending zoning bylaw, highway businesses zoning district development.
Let's say hold, I'd like to hear the comments, hear Jenny's presentation and maybe get some clarification on what the AFC asked for in terms of the minority vote.
So she's not planning to present those two articles because she already did at the joint meeting?
Okay.
But we could, she might have more insight into the comments that AFC provided.
Yeah, she doesn't have to be presented just.
Was it 30%?
Without having to do anything, yeah.
Or?
I didn't, I didn't watch.
What's the 30% that's by right? I don't know. Is it the open space or is it the land utilization?
Yeah, I think it's a 30% open space requirement and not having to do any of those suggested improvements.
Right, if you don't do any of those, then you'd have to maintain 30% open space.
No, 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 right now it's, you need to do those things to get down to 30%.
Right.
And they're saying, just move, they're saying, just move from 60 to 30 and don't make them do that other stuff.
Don't worry about it, just say, hey, we're going all in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
If that's the case, I disagree with the minority.
We can get her to.
Yeah, if she can just provide some 30.
So we're going to hold on Article 18. Article 19, we're going to have Lester, come speak to us, we'll hold on that as well. Just in case there's any new information. So that's being said.
So when do they, when are they printing their book? Holding until next week, are we okay?
It has to go to the printers, the final version has to be there by Monday, the 14th at 3:00 PM.
Perfect.
So technically.
Next week we can vote.
So voting on the 8th would be perfect.
Perfect, okay. No, I'm just saying, yeah, that's perfect.
Well planned.
So some of these ones that we just talked about, I think we can vote hopefully by, and get it into the booklet, because I agree with Shelby that as much as we can get in the booklet, we should with our vote.
So I would move to support Articles Two through Seven, 10 through 14.
Sevens are, hold.
No, eight, it's the new way. I'm doing the new numbers.
Yeah, okay.
Under the new numbering scheme for the next, the final version, I move to support Articles Two through Seven, 10 through 14, 16 and 17.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Great.
Okay.
Before you move on, or I don't know if you were going to say this, Ian, so maybe I'm stealing your thunder, but the municipal building committee is planning to have a discussion at their meeting on October 17th about their interest in the library temporary relocation into possibly the community center. So they, so I think we said we were, we would tell you all that they want to have that conversation, and I believe they're also, that message is going back to the library building committee. So they, so I think we said we would, we would tell you all that they want to have that conversation, and I believe they're also, that message is going back to the Library Building Committee. Might not.
This is the Library Building Committee saying this, telling the, pardon me, this is the Municipal Building Committee telling the Library Building Committee where they want their temporary space to be.
I don't think it's that directive, I think it's just more wanting to have the conversation.
I think it was thinking, yes, it was thinking broadly of, that we had a discussion about there, but should we have the discussion to think about, could it work and save taxpayers money?
Yeah.
With thinking about how we.
And I think they also, they wanted to, I think they wanted to invite someone from the Library Building Committee to understand kind of where they're at in the process. Have, have they explored other potential opportunities in town buildings? Just to, just to understand.
Yeah.
Gotcha, so I can preview my issues and correspondence of the select board. At the last Library Building Committee, the RFP went out for that space. I think it, but it, I take it back, it got approved, and then, so we'd go out shortly, 30 days, it's out for us, so we certainly wouldn't hear prior to that, so no decisions would be made, so certainly, I think there's still an opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think it's just, to your point, it is absolutely not Municipal Building Committee telling, or thinking they're telling, it was more of a discussion, it really was broadly about, again, working together and on behalf of the taxpayers.
Yeah.
If there's any opportunity.
I think, I think it's worthwhile. I guess the question is, it certainly holds up the first floor of the community center and work on that. So.
And we can experience it though.
As a library. Yeah.
I mean, there's also, I mean, I think there's also been discussion about the use of the senior center, which would do the opposite and hold up the library. So I, I mean, I just think they just want to have the conversation, and we didn't, we wanted the board to know about it, in case you're interested in hearing that conversation.
The public has been asking about that, so I think that was smart on the part of the Municipal Building Committee, and I think continuing to bridge and connect the dots with Library Building Committee and vice versa, that's, that's how we should be working.
Nothing else, it's out there for responses, the fact that potentially the new community center could be under consideration may affect how people then decide to bid on this. I mean, in a, in a positive way, understanding that they may have to lower their bids.
Right. Yeah, and I think it's, it goes back to, I think, what Shelby said earlier, that there's a number of things here, is, I think it's just good to have it, have that discussion, whether it changes anything or not. It will come up in town meeting, I'm sure, about a question on that.
Yeah, why didn't you think of that?
Yeah, so we, we did explore, we had meetings, this is what we did, I can explain it, so. I, I think from, our side of Municipal Building Committee said it, we thought it made sense, but again, not saying it's gonna change anything, but I think it's good for have the, have that discussion. Right. See if there's ways that it could work that would potentially save taxpayer money.
Yeah. Now, I, I think one thing to, to consider is, everybody then thinks, oh, great, we moved the community center, it's free. Well, no, you still have the cost of moving everything, right? That's, that's, right, there's multiple components to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Totally saving on lease. Saving on a lease.
Right.
Issues and correspondence.
I think we got everything, we're looking at issues and correspondence at this point. Anybody like to start off?
Well, Shelby's already on the wall.
Yeah, Shelby, go ahead.
Wait, I, I need, I need one minute, sorry.
All right. I can start, go ahead. We're heading into politics and campaign season, as we get down to the wire to the November elections, just a reminder to folks, public engagement is great, holding signs is great, remember the rules for town property and rotary as far as not planting signs. So if folks are gonna be out there campaigning and doing sign holding, please click the website, check out, make sure you're doing it in compliance with the policies. The other thing I have is a request for a future agenda item. The WRTA is currently looking and trying to decide whether to continue the via service or return to a fixed shuttle route. I'm concerned because it's unclear where, and I know they're working in contact with the Planning Department, but there's been very little, if any, public information about this. And I would like to invite them in to have that conversation. I've got, without any, given that there's no public information available, what options they're considering, I'm concerned because thinking back to the shuttle service, it was, there were decision made about how it ran that never made sense, so the shuttle stopped at the high school before the high school got out. So no one was getting on. The route, that was the express route from our train station to businesses on the east side of town, would not stop at any business along the route. So the executive park between Lyman and Bellows Road was a part of that system, and I just think, if they are gonna go to a fixed route, a system or multiple routes, I'd like to know and understand the connectivity with other regional transit authorities, routes, schedules, and is it serving the community with the flexibility that we have with the via service?
So they hired a consultant, and, and they're going through that process, so we've met with them to talk about kind of what's, what is going on in town, and, and they are going to do public engagement. So we can, they can, I mean, still, we can ask them to come here, but there is a plan, there is a whole plan for public engagement, so I don't want anyone to feel like decisions are being made at this point, they're right now, they're information gathering.
And who is they, Christie?
The consultant, for WRTA.
Or did you hire a consultant?
No, 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 the WRTA did, yeah, yeah. Yep. So we can ask them, we can ask them to come, I just want people to know that there will be opportunities, they were asking us about the farmer's market, and the arts in common, and all different options to have, to get public feedback. So. Yeah, so they should come and, and let everybody know that, yeah, definitely.
Anything else? Whoop, that was it?
Yeah, go ahead. Yep, so talking about the Library Building Committee, I guess one additional note is that I think the plan is to hopefully provide a few-minute update prior to fall town meeting, reaching out to town moderator to do that. Secondarily, with the Youth Commission, we had, we selected two excellent candidates today, and one of those is going to be replacing the now former Chair of the Youth Commission. I just want to say thank you to Pam Chimora Bridges for her years of working with the Youth, Youth Commission. She has done a tremendous job, really leading it after our former department head moved on to another opportunity while we transitioned, excuse me, to Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, so kind of a volatile time, and was just instrumental in, in making that process hopefully as smooth as possible, so thank you to Pam for staying on as long as she did, and look forward to continuing to see her around town. That's it.
I'll be real brief, just a reminder that this coming Saturday is Arts in Common on Bay State Commons, always a great event with vendors, free artists, and face painting, and Henna things, and whatever, for kids and adults alike, so always a fun time, live music, as well as a beer garden, so a lot of fun, hope folks can come out, I believe it's 11 to 5 is the timing of that, and encourage, fingers crossed, the weather's good, but encourage folks to come out and participate.
Okay, a couple items. First, community updates. The Row Fawasa is, event to raise money for their scholarships is on October 19th. That's being held downtown in front of Prototype Fitness, so event is free to attend, and cheer on rowers, and it's a fun time. They're, they'll have some kid activities there as well, so just want to make you aware of that. And Westboro Connects will be collaborating with the Westboro Public Schools and other organizations to host a Diwali celebration on October 24th from 5 to 7 PM at the Sugar Shack, more information will be coming out about that, you can check out the website at westbrowconnects.org. Okay. So committee update on my end, one is I wanted to just follow up with the board, the CMMPO. You'll recall, last time I came to you and asked if anyone here wanted to be nominated to be part of this sub-region leadership team for the municipal planning organization. We chose not to, I'm happy to report that the CMMPO did elect a delegate, Michelle Conlin from Shrewsbury, she's on the select board, so she'll be the Northeast Region delegate to that. And then they also elected a, an alternate, which is great, because I never had one, so yay, Bill Philsinger from Boylston. So those seats have been filled, and just wanted to just update the board there. Also, Hakamaka Pond, so as the board is aware, we received our five-year review, and that has resulted in many questions from the town, so Christie and I, and Jennifer Miller, Conservation Director, Fred Leonardo's Community Development, and I don't think I'm leaving anyone out, right? Just, we were on a call with state officials, primarily the EPA, to express our frustration at the lack of communication and notice, that that report became public before the town was notified, as well as our concerns about what's in the report. So the next step really is for the state to, they took our concerns away, and we're pretty close to getting another meeting scheduled, which is great, because that tells all of us that they heard our concerns loud and clear. So hopefully, we'll have another meeting with that same group in November. And so I would anticipate for this board, I've, I've held off on any other meetings at this point with the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee. I think this board might consider, I'd love to give the committee the courtesy of maybe meeting one last time, but I think that this board might consider dissolving that committee, depending upon kind of what the findings are from that. Christie, is there anything you want to add?
Dissolving it because reuse may not be.
Well.
I think there's a couple.
Yeah, I think, I think that there are a number of different reasons, and we can present that, so I would like the committee, I just want to give you guys a heads up, that I think the committee should meet again, we're, bless you, and maybe bring a recommendation back to the board as to how to best proceed.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll look for that.
And, let's see here. BWALT, just on the active transportations, I just want to kind of respond directly or indirectly to some of the comments that were made tonight, so I think I want to applaud the, our Director of Planning, Jenny, and, and team, the consultant, for the event that was held on September 11th on the BWALT, I thought it was excellent, it was, it was probably the most thorough kind of updated presentation I've heard of the BWALT in a long time. It's also very clear to me that there's a lot of work that needs to be done about getting the word out about BWALT in total, and I think that, I have not, I've not had a chance to follow up with Jenny, but I will, I think that the broader conversations need to take place for this to have the necessary momentum that it needs, and even, even so far as support in terms of any matching grants that we might pursue, because there were a lot of big numbers that were thrown out, but Christie has made it very clear, as has the board, that we're gonna do this kind of work through, primarily through grant work, and at low or no cost to the town. So lots of work still needs to be done there, and I do think, having driven over in that area, over by Meadow Road and Milk Street, yeah, Meadow and Milk, it's very tight over there, and the residents have some genuine concerns. So I'm, I, I'll be sharing those back with Jenny as part of being the liaison to that committee. And then Bagels with the Board, I attended that meeting on September 17th, and just highlights that came out of it, lots of questions around the community center, next steps in timeline, there were questions about the library project, is it still going forward, or not anymore? So I think as much as we talk about things, we need to continue to talk about them. Yep, you got it, okay. There were questions around the rotary changes, and when was that gonna happen, so people are following that work of the downtown study and work. There were some questions around stormwater utility calculations, and how does that factor in? Lots of people still don't know about Westboro TV and all the great work that they do, so we talked about that, and then there were a couple questions for DPW regarding cemetery maintenance, crosswalk restriping, and some other items that I'll be following up with Chris on. So there were 10 members, residents that attended, lots of great questions, some new folks from Del Webb, so nice to see that engagement, and they'll be looking forward to the next Bagels event. And then my final item, thank you, is, Christie, I'm wondering is, and maybe this goes to updating kind of our committee policy handbook at some point, but I think it would be really helpful for every committee to have a general mailbox that like the Chair and Vice Chair have access to, I don't know if that's possible, but we still have some boards and committees, specifically, this request comes for council and aging. You cannot directly email the council and aging, that email goes to, at least it's my understanding, to our director, not to the, the council members. And that's just, that's not how it should work, so there may be other committees out there, I'm just not aware of it, but I'm wondering how much of an undertaking that would be, maybe a question of Mark Stockman or whomever. So I'll put that out there, I think it would be helpful as to continue to, you know, obviously promote resident engagement, and even business engagement with the various boards.
Great, great suggestion.
And I'm actually done, sorry.
No. I, you know, you always do a great job, Shelby. Lots of great things going on. So I just have a couple of updates and comments, so first of all, I was unable to attend it, but this past weekend, we had the EV Expo. I'll look to get an update on that in the future to see how it went, to get some data from Sustainable Westboro on that. A couple of other updates on Sustainable Westboro, as you're all aware, we are working on the zero emissions vehicle policy as part of the Climate Leaders Program. That policy came back from our, the state, and DOER, and now it's ready to be presented to the school committee, which is gonna go back to them, they've already reviewed an earlier version and approved it, now it's going back for its final version, we expect to get that through them tomorrow, and then it'll come to the select board for review at an upcoming meeting.
Can I ask a question about that? Sure. Does that review include feedback by our public safety officials, specifically fire?
Yes, we engaged with, through Christie, with the different department heads.
Okay. Thanks.
I also wanted to just share with you that the Master Plan Implementation Committee also met again recently, and they're holding two meetings coming up here soon. The first one is on October 16th at 7:00 PM. The focus of that meeting is gonna be for them to look at the warrant articles, and see if there's any that the committee would like to vote on and share, that vote for town meeting. The second meeting they're gonna have is on December 9th at 7:00 PM, and that will be to, we've through the town, 10 of the 16 super priority items, I'll call them, that were identified by the Master Plan Implementation Committee have been marked or flagged as completed, so now we're gonna get back together and say, okay, let's refill up the queue here, what's the next round of 15 or 16? From that December meeting, we're gonna go have a conversation with Christie and the department heads to understand what they see as being their priorities, and start to work that conversation over the coming months to, again, with that, that list should, should be moving forward. And I think that's it, so thank you very much. Again, thank you very much for Westboro TV, I'll look for.
Alan, we're attending, right, the open space event, right, aren't we the designees for that on the 16th?
I believe so.
Right, just to remind the board.
It's not tomorrow.
Isn't that, is it tomorrow? I, I don't know, I just, when you mentioned master plan, I was thinking, is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Open Space and Recreation Stakeholder Meeting.
It's Patrick and you.
Oh, me and Patrick, oh, sorry. Okay. Yeah, okay, all right. Sorry, Alan, you don't get to go.
I just want to turn it on.
That's okay. Go on. Sorry.
What time is it at again?
Yeah, I'll.
Later, six thirty.
I'll move to go attention to the executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the following unions, Department of Public Works, dispatchers, police patrol, and police supervisors, if the chair determines that an open meeting would have a detrimental impact on the board's position, and under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, I R E Farmers Development Group L L C versus Town of Westboro, Lax Media L L C and Lax Media Mass L L C was to support Superior Court, C A number twenty-two, eight-five, C V zero-one, two-eight-one, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, I R E Town of Westboro versus Westboro S P E L L C, Boston Suffolk County Land Court Case Number nineteen, T L zero-zero-zero-seven-six-eight, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, I R E Westboro S P E L L C versus Town of Westboro, A Tal, U S District Court, C A number four, colon, twenty-three, C V one-two-zero-one-seven-dash-M R G, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westboro S P E L L C, U S Bankruptcy Court, Case Number twenty-three-dash-four-zero-seven-oh-nine, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter s, uh, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property at two-thirty-one Turnpike Road, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position, and under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A seven, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of September tenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Can I get a second?
No.
I think you say something else first.
Oh, that's right. I declare that open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating, negotiating and litigating positions, and we will not be reconvening after executive session, may I get a second?
Second.
Uh, we'll call, vote. Edinburgh, yes?
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Keough, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you very much, Westboro T V, everyone have a great night.